All right, good evening. I want to apologize for the delay. We're still getting used to doing these meetings in person and in Zoom. There are 60 people who are joining us tonight by Zoom who are benefiting from that, but it took us a little while to get it all to work right. So I apologize. And thank you for your patience. I'm Todd Bressi. I'm the Chair of the Norbert Planning Commission. I welcome you all here tonight. And I welcome our neighbors and friends who are joining us by Zoom. How many of you are new to the Planning Commission meetings? How many? Is anyone? About half the people is your first meeting. Well, welcome. I'm going to give you a little bit of the lay of the land, and then we'll get started. Tonight, we have three, we have two items on our agenda, two business items on our agenda. We usually start with me just giving updates and announcements, but because of the length of our agenda tonight, we will not do that at the beginning. We have two agenda items. One is preliminary, preliminary plan for 3 Elmwood. Because of the way that land development approvals work in Pennsylvania, the borough has a certain amount of time to act on applications, and that time expires at the end of this month. So that means the Planning Commission and the Borough Council are obligated to act on this application unless the applicant grants us an extension of that deadline. And so tonight, we'll be discussing that application, whether or not we should vote, whether or not there should be an extension and under what circumstances. And I apologize for those of you who came for our second agenda item, but that is a statutory thing we have to do. Second, the second item on our agenda is a public conversation about the historic district ordinance. This is not a meeting in which the Planning Commission is planning to take any action on this ordinance. The Planning Commission has already recommended this ordinance to Borough Council. Borough Council has voted to advertise it publicly, which enables them to consider in a future date whether they would vote to adopt the ordinance. So this tonight is an opportunity for us to answer questions that you might have if you have comments on the ordinance. Council could potentially have this on its agenda at its next meeting, July 21st, but we, but if we could have a chance to explain what's in it, why it came about, and how it would work. At the end of the meeting, we all, and in each agenda item, I should say, so for 3 Elmwood, we would accept public comment on that topic at that time in the meeting. And at the end of the meeting, we would accept public comment on any other matters that are before the Planning Commission that anyone has come here to discuss. That's, that's always the last agenda item. So that's how, how our meetings work. For those of you who've been here, we try very hard to make this an informal, I mean, this is a formal public meeting, but we try to make it informal. We try to give everyone an opportunity to speak who would like to speak. And we try to provide opportunities to speak at the appropriate time, so what you say might actually have an impact on what happens, not at the end of the meeting after everything's done. In exchange, we ask you to, one, be mindful that there are 100 people either here or on the Internet. And so try to keep any comments you have to make concise, to the point. If you would like to say something that someone else has already said, of course, you have the opportunity to speak, but please try to be brief because we have a lot of comments to get through usually. And, you know, I always like to say, one of the interesting things about being a volunteer on a board in Norbert is I see you all tonight, but I'll see you tomorrow. I'll see you on the streets. I'll see you in a store. One day, I might need your help. And so we all try to behave civilly to each other. We may disagree about things, but we try to keep our conversations at a civil level. We try not to accuse people of things. We try, we try to ask questions and share, share our points of view. And I hope that no matter how you feel about any item on our agenda, that you will help us have a conversation in that, in that way. Did you want to? Okay. So that is our agenda for the night, and that's generally how we proceed. So I would like to start with our first, is Zoom not working now?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I can't hear you. People can't hear you.
Yeah, so what we're going to, we're going to do this a little bit differently than we've done it before. Instead of everyone being muted, whenever a Planning Commission member is speaking, unmute yourself then, so that way people can best hear you in front of your computer screen, and then otherwise stay muted so we don't get feedback.
I'm going to have to log in when I sit down. So I'd like to start with our first agenda item, which is discussion of the preliminary plan for 3 Elmwood Avenue. We have with us tonight the team that is making the proposal. We discussed this at length at our last meeting. Tonight, what I'd like to do is see if we can review a few of the outstanding items for this project. I've been in touch with the Borough Engineer today, who is with us online. Eric, you're there somewhere on the screen. And, and ask the applicant to provide the status of different things that are still on the list of items they, they're working on. And then we will have a discussion on the actions that are before us and what actions we may or may not take. So that's, that's how we'll, we'll proceed. There will be an opportunity for any of you here who would like to comment on 3 Elmwood. Normally, we let the applicant, we have a conversation with the applicant. We allow the Planning Commissioners to ask questions, and then, and then we would ask for public comment at that point, so about midway through the agenda item. If you have something you'd like to say, you'll have an opportunity. So with that, I'd like to invite the, so I see, with masks, I just can't tell who's who. I see Chris. I see, is that Mr. Fromhold over there? I saw Frank Tavani somewhere.
Hello.
Hello, Frank. Is, is the applicant? Hello, good evening. So those folks who just identified themselves are the team that's representing this project. What I'd like to do, if I may, is sort of ask about some of the outstanding items that are on the list and see where they stand. Fred, did you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bressi. This is working.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Fred Fromhold. I don't know whether I can be heard by everyone here. If I cannot, please.
Chloe, can you, can you unmute your computer, please?
I'm, I have an audio headset.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if I can, I could take it off, but I'm not sure. I think that he's, yeah, sure. I'll make it.
I think I just turned on the mic, so I may be heard out. Thank you. I assume the protocol is that we wear masks in here. It is easier for me to hear and identify who is speaking and what is said, but hopefully I will keep my voice up so that people can hear me. And I'm going to be very brief. Just wanted to make a couple of points before we begin. I know that we had been, before you, a couple of weeks ago, this Zoom meeting when our team was here, not presently, but virtually, and we discussed at some length the plans, modifications that have been made to the plans since they were originally filed. But just big picture, we had been through a very comprehensive tentative sketch plan approval process, as you will know. We had a number of meetings, met with the community, ultimately received a recommendation from this Planning Commission of approval of the plan. We then received the approval of Borough Council of the tentative sketch plan. Since the property in question is both in Norbert Borough and Lower Merion Township, we were required to go through what is a very similar process in Lower Merion Township and had received the approval of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Merion Township of our tentative sketch plan. Subsequent to those approvals, we have filed preliminary plan applications in both the Borough and Lower Merion Township. And those plan applications have received a considerable amount of review. They have been reviewed by advisory bodies in both municipalities, by civic associations and conservancies. So there has been a comprehensive review of these plans by the community and also the professional views from the Borough Engineer and the Montgomery County Planning Commission that issued a joint review recommending approval of the preliminary plan as has been submitted. There have been, as you know, ongoing questions, and we have tried to address them as they have come up. And we have submitted additional information as it has been requested by both Lower Merion and Norbert. And I would like to say at the outset of the meeting tonight, that if you believe, as a Planning Commission, you need some additional information from us in order that you would feel comfortable making a recommendation, we're pleased to provide it. And to the extent that there would be some extension of time that would be required so that we could come back to you at your next meeting and present some additional information for your consideration in making a recommendation of this plan, we're happy to do that. We also, this evening, are committed to appear before the Lower Merion Township Planning Commission. And they are unnoticed that we are here first, and we're making our presentation to you. But at some point, we may be called by them, in which case, we would need to send part of our group to, at least to Lower Merion, assuming there is still ongoing discussion here. And in that regard, I would like Chris Yon, our civil engineer, to be in the position where he could go to Lower Merion. So I say that to you, that if there are questions of a civil engineering nature, if they could be advanced among the questions that you may have to ask, we would appreciate that. So with that, I would like to call on Chris. And we have here Chris Yon, our civil engineer, Bern Panzak from Black and Thomas Panzak, our landscape architect, Frank Tavani, our traffic engineer, of course, our client, the principal of the applicant here, Vince Feldkamp. But I'd like Chris to come up and just to summarize for you what modifications have been made since we last discussed this with you. If you think it would be beneficial for Chris to orient either you or those who are here or those who may be viewing on Zoom, on the property that we're discussing, we'd be happy to take a minute or two just to give that overview of the property in question, the existing improvement on the property, the home, the new units that are proposed for the property. So perhaps that would be helpful, Chris, just to do that, just to take a minute. And if you have questions along the way, please interrupt Chris. Is this in an appropriate spot?
No.
Or shall it be?
I can't see it from here.
I'm not sure. It's difficult to see. What are the advantages of the Zoom meeting? That it's, one, is that a little bit better? And then hopefully everybody can see it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Yon. I am the civil engineer for the property. I will be very brief with the overview, since we did spend a lot of time on the 29. For those of you who haven't seen it before, here is East Winwood Road on plan. We have, this is one property. The address is 3 Elmwood Avenue. Although this dark line right here is the separation of the property between the portion that's in Norbert and the portion that's in Lower Merion Township. And so we believe that happened back when, when the road was reconfigured, it used to have a sharper curve, and the municipal boundary was on the side of the street. Once it was a softer curve, it created this portion of Lower Merion on the Norbert side of the street. What we have proposed is the existing home will remain on Lot 1. The property will be subdivided down the center of East Branch Indian Creek, which is a, it's a creek that runs to the site. This is a concrete channel that exists. And then we have three new buildings proposed. They have two units each. In Norbert, we are calling them a two-family dwelling. In Lower Merion, they're called a twin building, just based on the way the codes work. So there's two units here in Lot 2, 2 in Lot 3, and 2 in Lot 4, for a total of six. There are some garage parking spaces in the back of four of these units, and then some surface spaces behind that. That's a real quick overview of what we have. We're happy to go into any further detail. Todd, or Mr. Bressi, should we have questions now?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I was distracted because my Internet connection went out. Is the protocol that I should turn my mic on?
Yeah.
Can't because my.
I'm totally.
Okay. Okay. All right. I had to wait until the mic got turned on. Chloe, can you turn yours off now? Okay, thank you. Thanks for that overview, Chris. I wanted, I would like to ask some questions to follow up on some of the topics that we discussed last time you were here, as well as some of the correspondence we've received since, since that meeting. My first question has to do with the highway occupancy permit application from Pendott, which I, I believe is still pending, and they've requested additional information from you.
That's correct.
Hold on. I would have to unmute again before they can hear you, so just like to take a deep breath after you ask.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Chris's turn.
That's correct. We submitted to Pendott in early June. We did receive their review letter on Thursday afternoon, the 8th, and I forwarded it to both the Borough and Lower Merion Township on Friday, the 9th. We have reviewed that letter. We have not addressed it yet, but we found that basically the comments are things that we can address and will.
All right. I heard a question about one of the items. It's really, first, an informational question. The, there is an item in the letter related to drainage. And is that the same as, is it drainage? Or is it the stormwater?
They're saying they can't review. Is one of those unmuted down there?
I'm speaking. I have Jim Spears' mic.
Jim Spears' mic.
Yes, it's, I'm sorry, it's the drainage, item number one. The letter refers to a detention basin. I spoke with Eric Johnson about that today, and we weren't really clear what they were referring to. Do you know what they're referring to in that letter?
I believe they're referring to the rain garden in the back. I'm not aware that Pendott really recognizes the rain garden as something different. Those are some comments I wanted to discuss with them. Typically, with Pendott application, you do have to provide a stormwater management plan, the same way that you would with the Borough and with Lower Merion Township. For Pendott, what they're concerned with is the drainage going to the street. And so in this case, that was almost nothing. Right now, there's the existing sidewalk that goes to the street, and what's proposed is a, is a portion of the proposed sidewalk. So we really just had to show that there was a reduction in runoff going to the street. We did not provide the additional calculations for the rain garden in the back, because to me, that wasn't applicable to Pendott. But I, I haven't had a chance to go over that with the reviewer yet.
Okay. My, my follow-up question would be, were it necessary for you to comply with these requests? Does the rain garden you have designed now meet the design standards that Pendott has, has requested that you meet? Or do you feel that's moot because this is not in the area of the property that drains to the road?
Well, I could feel it's moot, but at the same time, I don't always win my arguments with Pendott. And so if we had to revise the plan, then we would.
Okay. It requires an eight-foot burn. That's quite a dimension. Is that, is there really room to make that revision?
Yes. I mean, we would, right now, I believe it's a four-foot burn, so we would make it eight feet, which makes the area of the rain garden a little smaller. And so we'd have to offset that by making it a little bit deeper or expanding a little closer to the part of Lot 4 of the hill.
I have a question related, on July 10th, the Borough Engineer submitted an updated letter, sort of indicating the aspects of his letter that you had responded to and, and those aspects which were still outstanding. And one that caught my eye was his comment that the grading along, I guess, the, along the parking near Lot 4, is it Lot 4? The, the lot closest to the SEPTA embankment was, was that, was a slope that wasn't acceptable. Do you believe that that's correct? Is that something that you would be able to address?
Yes, we would address that. So the grading right now above the wall is a 2 to 1 slope. And the code section that the Borough Engineer referenced, that it's a maximum 3 to 1 slope, or you can provide a letter demonstrating that that slope would be acceptable with that type of soils. So we would take a look at that, see if it's easy enough to just regrade it to a 3 to 1, or if it would be easier to address that comment with the letter. But either way, I view that as a welcome.
There were some comments in various letters about the maneuverability diagrams. Those are the diagrams that indicate how vehicles like trash trucks would circulate on the site. For the public's clarification, I do not believe those are things that are, come under the purview of our site development ordinances. Nevertheless, it's something that our, our engineer reviewed. And our engineer had a couple of questions about how those were, were done, particularly in terms of the length of vehicles that were modeled. Do you have any response to his comments about the maneuverability diagrams?
Yes. So the, one of the comments was, we used an 18-foot design vehicle. That's what is in the code for the parking spot requirement. But the diagram we showed said 19, so that was just a change to change the 19-foot dimension to say 18. So that was one that I believe we did address. The other comment was really that the maneuverability was tight, and he is correct. Basically, we designed it to minimize the pavement. That was one of the things that I heard loud and clear when we were in the tentative sketch process, was to minimize the pavement, reduce the pavement. And so, you know, one of the things with those maneuverability diagrams is that they are for a perfect rectangle vehicle, and those basically don't exist. They are, you know, anyone, I imagine anyone in this room that has a vehicle, the, the front of them are a little rounded, so are the rears. I would argue most of the cars in this room, or from people in this room, would be smaller than that 18 feet. And so really what we're showing is what I believe would be a worst-case scenario with those getting close and having only maybe one backup and turn. If those people didn't feel comfortable and thought they were too close to another spot, then they would just back up again and pull forward. So I think from my perspective, we were trying to keep, minimize the impertinence coverage, and that's what makes those maneuverability diagrams look tight. If we, if the Borough would instead prefer that there's some more wiggle room on those, then we would expand the pavement.
Chris, I got up because I was given the instruction that I need to use the mic when I speak. So I'm going to pass it under here. Okay, is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. We're, we really do appreciate your patience while we try and get this right. So, and Chris, if I missed a beat because I was getting up and walking over here, I apologize. But I looked at those diagrams myself, and I noticed that if I'm looking at them correctly, you know, the garbage truck to maneuver out, according to the diagram, has to back up the inbound driveway. Is that, that's what that diagram showed. And the cars, the cars in the, in the garage is closest to the railroad embankment to get out, they need to back up to, back up or into the area where other cars would be pulling in. Is that an example of the tightness that you're describing? Yeah, sorry.
I don't think so. I think we would have seen a different comment about that, saying that it was back towards the driveway. We'll say that driveway has, I want to say it's close to more than 60 feet from the street to the back of those buildings. And so, you know, backing up, say, 20 feet still would lead 40 feet in front of the driveway. That being said, I am confident that at least for that trash truck, I know because when the person who did it for me showed it backing up that way, I said, was that the only way it could go? He said, no, it could also go more into the drive, or the, more of the parking aisle instead of the drive-out. So I know that I could adjust that one for the trash truck to go more in the parking aisle.
And I'm not sure if anyone asked you this before, but in a conversation I had with Lower Merion folks the other day, they, they noted that what's really common for development like this is to have like a landscape contractor come in, like a big long F-150 with a trailer, which is longer than a garbage truck. And they said the last thing they want is they don't want them parking on Winwood Road. As, as you all know, you know, you see those parked on the road all the time. So they would have to pull in to this area as well, and their vehicle would have to be parked somewhere while they're doing their work. Have you modeled or looked at maneuverability diagrams for these kind of landscaping companies that would typically be working on a site like this?
No, I have not. I have not been asked that question before. I guess my response would be that, you know, the, a landscape company is not, you know, just one size fits all for the borough. It's hired by the specific homeowner. And so I would think that the homeowner could control and say, we have one loading space that is 30 feet deep. You can't bring a truck longer than 30 feet. And I've seen in my own neighborhood, that you're right, some are the trucks with the trailers on the back, some are more of that van with the overhead layer that everybody rolls out the back of that.
Okay, thank you. I do, the last question I have is about the waiver, the one item that we do have to make a recommendation to council on. But before I do that, I'd like to ask, do any other Planning Commissioners have any other questions at this point about any of the, I don't, I don't want to go over old issues, but of any of the outstanding topics? Any questions?
Which constitutes an outstanding topic.
I don't know. What do you, what would you like to ask about?
I would like to ask about traffic safety.
Oh, okay. I do have a question about that. May I ask a question first?
Please.
I understand that, so the Borough Traffic Engineer did issue some comments on this, and I understand that Mr. Tavani and the Borough Engineer conferred very recently, I don't know, Friday, about, about responses to the Borough Engineers' comments. And I'm wondering if you can update us on the outcome of the conversation that they had, or if Mr., either you or Mr. Tavani could do that. Thanks. And could you please introduce yourself?
Certainly. My name is Frank Tavani, and I'm a traffic engineer. I've been in practice for the last 28 years, 28 years, and I've been working on this project since it started about a year and a half ago. Mr. Bressi is correct. I did have a conversation with Mr. Mike Schneider late last week regarding his letter dated June 21st. I issued a response to that letter the very next day, dated June 22nd, I believe. I sent it to the Borough, and perhaps you've seen it. I essentially went through my responses, some briefly, some in greater detail with Mr. Schneider. There were no surprises. I guess one of the issues that's come up with more than once was comment four regarding other approved nearby developments. And it's been expressed to me on one-on-one occasion that there are many different projects that have been approved and are in various states of ongoing nature. Some are very small, some are larger. Some of the larger projects actually have a trip generation component that replaces previous trip generation on the site. For example, the Bricklands Hardware Store is going to be replaced with some other commercial plus residential on top. The residential is obviously new traffic, but the commercial that's proposed on the first tour is more or less in exchange for what had previously existed. Essentially, I don't know how much detail you'd like me to go into, but what Mr. Schneider suggested I do is take a more careful look at the background growth rate that I had previously incorporated into the study, which was more than double what Pendott recommends, to see whether or not the actual trips that results from that very conservative to see whether or not the actual trips that results from that very conservative component of the study reasonably marries up with the potential traffic from these other developments, realizing that these other developments will have traffic going in all directions. Some traffic will be going to and from Montgomery Avenue, some will be going to and from North Wynwood Road. So I begun those investigations, and from what I've done so far, I'm confident that the numbers already incorporated in the study more than conservatively reflect these potential other developments. And I did tell Mr. Schneider I would update my study and appendix accordingly. He was not surprised at what I told him, that I thought the numbers were actually going to be more than adequate. Would you like me to just go through more of the comments in the letter, Mr. Bressi?
Please.
So another comment was discussion about the crosswalk at the signalized intersection. I'm sure you all know there's one crosswalk at that, at that traffic signal. It's a standard crosswalk, that's what Pendot designed about seven or eight years ago. There's different types of crosswalks that could potentially bring greater awareness to pedestrian activity. One is called a continental or a piano crosswalk, it's where you have these, instead of just having two parallel lines, you have those two parallel lines plus thicker lines that are perpendicular and sort of join those lines. He suggested that making that enhancement might be appropriate. Doing that technically requires an update to the signal plan, since the signal plan must match existing conditions, obviously requires cutting down the road in order to put the thermoplastic down. So, you know, in my opinion, it seems like that's a bit of a lift for six-unit development, but I did tell him that I would look into this a little bit more, talked to Pendot about it. One of the contacts of Pendot is on vacation until later this week, but I'm sure, I'm confident that we can work something out with regard to that improvement. We talked about access, I'm sure you, all the commission members have heard many times about the concerns with the existing right-turn lane that is present for essentially the entire frontage of the site, and how any exiting traffic, all of which is right-turning, because we agreed at the outset of the application to restrict outbound left turns, so we only have outbound right turns, how some of that traffic may very well go into the right-turn lane, but some of it may also want to go to points west and weave over into the through lane, you know, to go to Giant or to go to Micah's Avenue beyond. You know, I pointed out that context is everything here, and we're talking about hourly trip generation that's on the order of five or six trips per hour, that's total in and out. So the amount of traffic leaving the slate is probably going to be two or three trips during the peak hours, that's about one vehicle every 20 minutes. And in the, in the potential outcome that there is stopped traffic at the traffic signal, either extending to or beyond the site exit driveway, the question is, how long would a site exiting motorist have to wait before the traffic starts moving and he or she can proceed to exit the site? And the extensive level of service modeling we've done over the last year and a half has shown it's about 15 to 20 seconds on average. Sometimes there won't be any delays, sometimes the traffic won't be stopped at all, and the exiting motorist, again, one every 20 or 30 minutes, should be able to proceed undaunted. But at worst, they would wait about 18 seconds, and he did not disagree with anything that I put forth there, and it's all right from the traffic study. We talked about the pedestrian lead interval, for the benefit of the commission members, that signal, if you've never took particular notice of it, actually has a five-second interval where all traffic is stopped with a red ball indication, and then the ped heads show a walk symbol. That's if you push the pedestrian button, obviously. So at that point, it gives five seconds for a pedestrian to start entering the intersection, establish him or herself present in the intersection before any vehicles move at all, and some people can get halfway across the street just in that all-red interval. And then there's another 18 or 20 seconds, I believe, where you do start having traffic move, but the pedestrian always has the right of way, and the signal head is still showing a pedestrian walk symbol. His simple request was to see if we could potentially lengthen that all-red interval a few seconds. You know, I told him I would talk to Pendot about that, it's really their purview. I don't think it's really going to have a negative impact on levels of service, so as long as they're okay with it, I think the applicant's okay with it. And I think that was it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Jim, you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Can I bring the mic over?
Thank you. Good service, Todd, thank you. The question I have has to do with the inbound lane and the speed of traffic on Wynwood Road. As I've, as I've reported to this group in the past, I am now the proud owner of a granddaughter that was one block southeast of this site, at, what's the name of the street? Woodside. And we sit in her front yard and observe traffic with speeds of close to 60 miles an hour, six-zero on occasion, not constantly, but when people really, really want to get to the market, they're going 60 freaking miles an hour past that intersection. Now, that intersection, also designed by a famous traffic engineer somewhere, has a very wide radius curve, suitable, I would say, for a race track. Now, I would call attention, and that exacerbates the speed issue with cars turning into Wood, into Woodside Avenue at a high rate of speed. You never see a red light, nobody's patting the brakes, they're zooming around that corner. It's very dangerous, and we are about to erect a fence to contain the dog and the child. My question has to do, Todd wants me to get to the question. My question has to do with the radius of the inbound driveway, which is extremely wide, not unlike the one I just described. And I presume that that is for the maneuverability of the aforementioned trash truck, is that correct? And I would comment that compared to other driveway entrances in the world that we operate in, particularly the one here at 3 Elmwood Avenue, where there's like a two-and-a-half-foot angled curb cut. This thing is going to, going to increase the speed of people making that right turn off of Wynwood Road into the project. It makes the crossing of the sidewalk at the inbound driveway very long, and it means that people aren't going to slow down when they drive in there. So my contention is that that's an extremely hazardous situation that exacerbates the already murderous traffic condition along Wynwood Road. I wish there were something we could do about that, because I'm very, I'm very happy that no one I know is going to live in this place. Thank you.
I don't think we can see it here.
I would just note for the inbound driveway, that, you know, we have a limit on the maximum width that we can have for driveway in first lot layer in Norbert, and also in Lower Merian Township. So part of our struggle is we're limited to the width, so I can't just make a smaller radius and make it wider the way that some of those streets would be, where they have a small radius, but then there's 24 feet, I'm sorry, 24 feet from curb to curb. That being said, those streets are just macabre to macabre. And what we have here for this driveway is concrete, and so there will be a depressed curb that is an inch and a half high, and then the concrete and the sidewalk has to pass through at rate, and so those things will act as, I call it, traffic calming to slow the car down so it can't go through the driveway that fast.
I beg to differ.
Are there any other questions, any other, Jim?
Hi. My questions are about the stormwater management system, which, which is now in the form of a rain garden, which used to be a more traditional form. There's a, the, my understanding from the last meeting is that a traditional stormwater management system was abandoned because the soil tests are not favorable, the percolation rate is slow. So a couple of questions about the rain garden that is replacing it. What is going to drain the rain garden? If the soil is that bad, we'll run into the same problem, the drain rate of the rain garden would be equally as slow. A second question is, I saw some documentation from Lower Merian that said that the rain garden was requested to be sufficient to handle a 25-year storm, and given that 100-year storms are coming, you know, a lot more frequently nowadays, 25, a 25-year storm doesn't seem to be sufficient, particularly for the site, which is environmentally sensitive already. We all know that there's an open stream there, or channel on the stream. I feel like putting more pressure on this area is a bad idea to begin with, and now that the soil tests are not favorable to an engineered drainage solution, I don't see how we really move forward on this unless there's, you know, unless there's some hefty assurances that we'd be able to handle this going forward into the future.
So if I could unpack that, maybe there's two key questions. One is, if, if the, whoops, if there are difficulties with water infiltrating into the soil, how will the water from the rain garden, will it infiltrate and how? And secondly, can you, can you explain, so what, for the audience, what Jim Spear was referring to is, is Lower Merian Township has requested a condition of development for this rain garden, that it, you can explain it, but that it, that it absorb water from a 25-year storm from a water filtration point of view. So Chris, if you could walk us through what that actually means, I needed Eric to walk that, me through that today, so I can understand it. If you could do that, that would be helpful. But also Jim's other question was, how does, how does water, what happens to the water that goes into the rain garden? Does it seep into the ground or spill out to the floodplain?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the way that I would explain stormwater to a homeowner that comes to me, and, you know, once the pool in their backyard needs to do stormwater management says, well, my yard drains, you know, very well, I shouldn't have to do stormwater. So I said that when it rains on a field, some of the water seeps into the ground, and what doesn't runs off slowly. When it rains in a parking lot or impervious coverage, then none of it seeps into the ground and runs off quickly. And so those are the two main design requirements for municipalities, is the infiltration portion and the rate control portion. In most municipalities, the volume or the infiltration part is designed for a two-year storm, and the rate control is designed for a 100-year storm. What we have designed here, this rain garden, the rate is designed for a 100-year storm. When you can infiltrate, then there's really a third component that gets ignored, is when you can infiltrate, then the water infiltrates into the soil and its water quality. And the, any oils, greases, or fertilizers are infiltrated into the soil and kind of, you know, treated by the soil, soaked up a little bit, instead of going right into the creek. And so, in the mainline area, Lower Merian, Norbert, East Town, Tridifor, and Paverford, Radnor, the majority of systems we design are underground stormwater management systems, they're much more expensive than a rain garden. But they're designed that way because the land is valuable, and people don't want to see a rain garden in their yard. They would prefer to have that underground system that they can pave on top of, or put a patio on top of, or would just use the yard area. That being said, the rain garden is the, you know, if you talk to environmental people, they are always asking for rain gardens. So there was a request for a rain garden from the first comments we got for this project, why do we have an underground instead of a rain garden? So when you can infiltrate, you can't do that water quality. So the way to do the water quality when you can infiltrate is to provide a rain garden so that the water goes in, you provide a certain amount of amended soils, where the water can drain through those soils, be treated the same way that they would be treated in an underground system. There's also plants in there where the plants will soak up some of the water, the sun will evaporate some of the water from their leaves, and then there's an under-drain underneath the rain garden that takes that water out. So the water quality is provided by those plants and soils before it drains out. Now what Lower Merian asks for is, they ask for infiltration for the 25-year storm. Other municipalities, including Norbert, ask for the two-year storm, just for an order of magnitude, the two-year storm is a little more than three inches of rain, the 25 is 5.8 inches of rain. So it's almost double the volume. Now, when you can infiltrate, then I get to use that volume during my routing, which means the water comes in, I get to use that volume, I control how quickly it goes out for my rate control. When you can infiltrate, then that volume is just a dead storage that I'm not allowed to use in my routing, because they'd say, well, that's potentially filled. So what Lower Merian is asking for is, in addition to the rain garden that's already designed for the 100-year storm, already has the water quality, they are now asking for another volume for the 25-year storm to be, to be put there, which will be, which just also drains through the, through the soils enough. So it's, Lower Merian didn't ask for something less, they asked for something more than what Norbert requires.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Any other planning commissioner questions? Okay. What I would like to do now is ask for a public comment on this matter, well then we'll have planning commissioner discussions, discussion of the opportunity to have a proceed. Is there anyone here? So first, we will take comments from people in the room. If you're watching on Zoom at home, please indicate in the chat that you would like to speak, and the borough manager will make note of that, and then we'll get around to it. Again, I want to be mindful of the time, so please keep your comments as concise as possible. Is that Gigi?
It is.
Good evening.
Gigi Moffat, 206 Wayne Avenue. I apologize for doing a little cha-cha. So I'm new to the sketch, but not necessarily new to the issue. I don't want to, to Mr. Cornwell's point, you and I both know, and a majority of the people here and the members of the public, understand that people do cross at other points on Wynwood Road that make this kind of really dangerous as to Jim's point in the speed. Is it possible in any way to have a conversation with Lower Merian as this traffic comes through that there is no left turn into these driveways? Is that a possibility, an aspect, maybe we could get from Lower Merian that there would be no left turns onto this property? My concern is further down, as we know that people cross from Shortbridge into our community and back and forth, and that, to Jim's point, the speed issue is a great concern to me and where people are crossing. I also think, Mr. Yon, Chris, I want you to know that this community paid $850,000 for a very, very expensive rectangle vehicle less than two years ago in Sarre Firedrop, and that rectangle vehicles absolutely exist, and that when I look at this, I get a little nervous about the community's investment. So if there's any way that we could have a conversation regarding the backing up or use of that particular piece of equipment, I would appreciate that. Also, to the, to the rain garden piece, sorry, Mr. Spear cleared up my original questions, but I will say, who's responsible for this rain garden when you're all gone? When this is sold, whose job is it to upkeep that rain garden to that great percentage points that you discussed? Who is, who's supposed to do that? Thank you. I'll go first. Thanks, Todd.
Thanks. Particularly, the first, first question you'd be asked about the left turns, make sure, do you have a response to that? What is the status of your conversations about left turns in from Wynwood eastbound or southbound?
From Schneider?
No, what's the status of your conversations either with Mr. Schneider or Lower Merian Township about whether left turns should be allowed in to the site, which is what Gigi's questioning.
Sure. And I also understood, I believe, from the tone of her question, that speeds are a concern along the roadway. And I know Lower Merian Police Department did a speed study not that long ago, and I believe what they found was the 85th percentile of speeds in both directions was 38 miles per hour, so not a really terrible deviation from the posted 35.
If I may reclassify my question, when I'm really talking about a left turn.
I was going to, yeah, okay. So you've heard from me many times that this is going to be a very low generator of traffic, and it is. However, just the presence of the driveways and the occasional turning nature of vehicles in and out of the driveways will, of course, interrupt flow to a small extent of through traffic, as well as traffic turning right on East Wynwood Road. So I would offer that, just the nature of the project does have a traffic calming aspect to it, but there is a left-turning motorist waiting to enter the site, it's It's possible that the traffic behind that left-turning motorist may not proceed, which would actually create some gaps that might benefit pedestrians and motorists alike downstream. So in one sense, I believe those left turns could actually benefit the borough and the community at large. We are looking at all the turning movements. I believe that the turning movements, with the exception of the outbound left, which we conceded from the outset, as I mentioned earlier, I believe none of the turning movements are problematic. We are going to continue working with PennDOT and Penoni, both in Lower Merion and the borough, to ensure that everyone is on board. I believe the nature of the comments we received so far recognize that PennDOT has the ultimate say. I mean, they are the owners of the street and they have to be given the highest authority, the highest weight, so we will, you know, be working very closely with them to make sure they're set. I know there were other parts to her question. Shall I hand over to Chris now?
Sure. Just, who else? Who will take care of the rain garden? That's the only other question.
The homeowners association, so there will be a declaration that says they need to maintain it in both Norbert Borough and in Lower Merion Township. There are codes that require that it be inspected, I believe in Lower Merion is every two years by a professional engineer, and I believe in Norbert, I believe that the developer contributes a fund or contributes fees to Norbert, which goes into a fund, and I believe it's the Norbert engineer that reviews it every three years, but maybe Mr. Johnson could confirm that through.
He's gonna stop. I need you to please. Is he gonna stop? He's not yet. Nope. Okay. All right, go ahead, Eric. Oh, sorry, let me actually turn, hold on one sec, Eric.
If that's correct, a maintenance fund is established as part of the project.
If the answer is yes, there will be a maintenance fund established as part of the project.
Mr. Devage, I just checked the recommended conditions of approval from Lower Merion Township that they have, will be discussing with you tonight, and they are discussing, they have requested as condition of approval that you prohibit left turns into that site, which I just had to double check. So are you prepared to accept that condition from Lower Merion Township?
So I don't have the condition in front of me at the moment, but I do recall that the condition was rather likely, and what it said firstly was that ultimately, this is the purview of PennDOT, as I just said. And I believe it said that the applicant should continue to investigate what is necessary for this turning movement, and I think Mr. Bressley is indulging.
You're gonna be at their meeting soon, so you should know what they say.
I just didn't expect to be discussing their conditions at the moment.
Well, no, we're discussing Ms. Teflon Moffett's question, Mr. Devage. Okay? And this is, this is information that is important to that.
Thank you, Mr. Yon. So this is the traffic engineer's letter, or the township engineer's letter, comment 22. If and as required, were permitted by PennDOT, a physical barrier shall be provided if left-turning movements are to be restricted from exiting the development onto Wynwood Road. The applicant is to continue to coordinate with PennDOT and the township regarding the placement proposed barrier. So we have no problem with that in this state.
Yeah, required by PennDOT. Okay. Are there any, so let's move on then. Thank you for that. Any other questions from the public here?
There was one other question about the fire truck being able to maneuver. She asked that, but that wasn't addressed.
So more than likely for a development of this size, a fire apparatus will simply fight through the street, would be my expectation. Mr. Yon will stop.
We actually had a joint meeting with the Norbert Fire Marshal and also the Lower Merion Fire Marshal and discussed access to the site, and both concluded that if we sprinkled the buildings, which the developer has agreed to do, that they would not enter the site, so that the fire trucks would, or I guess they didn't need access around the building.
Mr. Grove. Yeah, please, just be mindful of the time.
This is not so much a question, it's just a comment, that what I think the Lower Merion Township and the borough is confronted with.
Sorry, sir, can I get your name, please?
Oh, I picked apart. My name is Peter Grove. I live in Norbert, in Norbert Park.
Right, thank you.
Right. What I think the borough and the township are confronted with are a group of people trying to put a court in a tight pot. Everybody I speak to looks at that plot of land and says, what? They're going to put houses there by that traffic, that traffic pattern? It also happens to be the last fragment of natural open space in Norbert. I believe that the borough should approach the owner, Mr. Alwin, and perhaps say, we can't afford it now, but the borough needs to buy that piece of land along with Lower Merion and make it a pocket park for the people of South Norbert. It is a delight. And through it, for two years, I've been working restoring the stream banks in Norbert Park, so don't tell me about token rain gardens. That is a rain garden now, and it should be left that way and somewhere down the road, made into a delightful park for the people who will follow us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. Mr. Leydell, could you introduce yourself, please?
Jesse Leydell, 108 South Norbert Ave., and I have a comment that you can respond to if you wish. This is building on Jim Spear's comment about retrospective versus prospective stormwater levels, and the Environmental Advisory Council has had this conversation with the developer and his team, but I want to register that concern that, you know, we are beholden to a set of stormwater standards that are retrospective, and we all acknowledge that and it's problematic. But I want to just share an illustration of how problematic it is. So if you all remember Superstorm Sandy less than 10 years ago, statistically, that's a 260-year storm looking backwards. Climatologists will tell you that today, that's a 25-year storm, and in 10 years, that will be a five-year storm. So as we think about the holding capacity on this property, if we want it to last more than 10 or 20 years, I think we need to think in a whole different scale of water retention. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here tonight, or should we? Okay, we will go to the people who would like to speak, who are in Zoom on the end, and we'll ask Alexandra Ting first. Just bear with us, Alexandra, let's, how do we do this here?
Yeah, so what, we're gonna try doing it on my computer again?
Todd, okay. You have one more, Neil.
Okay, we'll get to that then. Sorry, sir.
I can wait, it's no problem.
Should I mute?
Yeah.
I'll try that.
All right, Alexandra, I think you should be able to unmute yourself and speak when you're ready.
Thank you. I already did, I did, I just did. I just have to say, I agree with Peter Grove. Oh, this, I'm at 117 Woodside Avenue on the south side of Norbert, right near the Three Elmwood property. And I just want to say, there's so many reasons why this development is inappropriate. The houses are way, way too big. I can see that. The house that's there is a substantial size already, and these twins are huge. I think they're out of scale, and the, the floodplain has been sacrificed to an extent to accommodate these very large houses and paved area behind them, and I just feel that's a mistake. I think the traffic, potential traffic problems are just astronomical, and what are, with all due respect, our traffic engineer has said about the left turn, other things, making the traffic, making it, causing traffic calming, I don't agree. I think that motorists are crazy these days and they drive that, I think it'll just cause accidents, and there are already accidents and speed, people speeding all the time, and we've requested different traffic calming measures at Woodside Avenue for years, and they haven't been done. So, I mean, my feeling is this, this development shouldn't happen, and I feel that we should really look into grants to get this property, to purchase the property from the owner. I don't know if there's a combination of things that can be done, maybe one, one house can be built in the corner, but the majority of that land or all of it should be kept as a floodplain, a park, a natural area for us, and we, we really need natural area land. So that's my, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. We have one more Zoom speaker, but is that Dennis?
Yes.
Hi, Dennis.
Hi.
We'll call on you, and can you please?
Pause just a second. I can't unmute. Do you want to stay being sound?
Yeah. Well, can we get through one on Zoom first?
Okay. Mr. Cal, would you mind waiting until we have another Zoom speaker?
Yeah, then I'll.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Just technical, figuring it all out. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, so next is Maureen McGinn, I believe.
Yeah. I just have to find her. All right, Maureen, I'm gonna try to find you here in Zoom and unmute you. Hold on one sec. Yes. Call. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sorry, can you hear me? I was getting an echo. Okay. So I'm Maureen McGinn. I'm the director of the Lower Merion Conservancy. I live at 222 North Norbert Avenue. The conservancy is located in Gladwin. I appreciate the opportunity to read the conservancy's comments regarding Three Elmwood Avenue. The conservancy is an environmental nonprofit focused on protecting the streams and open space in Norbert and Lower Merion. The conservancy keeps an eye on new development applications and weighs in on plans that could cause significant harm to the environment and the historic fabric of our community. We do know that some development is inevitable, so we save our comments for applications that present the potential for the most harm. We believe that the proposed development at Three Elmwood Avenue is such a project, one that would cause serious problems for the environment and the people living downstream from the project. We have shared recommendations for the site during previous meetings and continue to stand by them. They include removing the degraded stone walls, regrading the stream banks to let water overflow naturally during storms, replanting the open areas with more large trees to secure the soil and improve water absorption, and establish no-mow practices in more areas in the floodplain. We also want to point out that should development go forward, the stone walls channelizing the stream will impair the values of any plantings done along the riparian area. In our view, the applicant's need for a waiver emphasizes why no project should go forward on this site. Virtually all the streams in our area are impaired because clean water was not a priority when our community was developed. The stone walls channelizing the stream on this property are proof of that. Nearby houses were built in and around the stream, contributing to flooding, exacerbating streambed erosion, and degrading water quality. We cannot remove the existing houses or move Wynwood Road, but we can avoid repeating mistakes by preventing this development. If we continue to grant waivers counterintuitive to stormwater regulations set forth by the state of Pennsylvania, our flooding and water quality problems will continue to increase. We should not be giving waivers for the very few stormwater regulations that we do have in place. While this waiver request is only for one site by one applicant, it's important to note that it follows numerous pre-existing waivers granted on other properties by other applicants in the past. The accumulation of waivers has a cumulative effect on the environment. A waiver for a site as sensitive as Three Elmwood Avenue would call into question the reason for having municipal codes at all. The Norbert Code calls for stormwater systems that allow water to infiltrate into the ground to help protect our streams and limit flooding. The system designed to hold and slowly release water, like the one being proposed at Three Elmwood, would have less ability to filter out pollutants from the proposed structures than an infiltration-based system that the code requires. As precipitation rates continue to increase due to climate change, our stormwater management systems need to have the resiliency to adapt. This property does not have the capacity to handle the development that is being proposed on it. The results of the infiltration tests and the request for stormwater waiver show that the conservancy encourages the planning commission to deny this application. Thank you for the chance to share these comments.
Thank you. One more. Carol Marie Scanlon.
All right, Carol Marie, I'm gonna unmute you next here.
Hello. I am coming to you from Zoom because I am out of town. Carol Marie Scanlon, Sabine Avenue. I absolutely agree that this property should be kept as an open space. Peter Grove has a brilliant idea, as does Maureen McGinn. Norbert does not have enough open space. Norbert is, should have, according to the National Parks, should have about 27 acres of open space and parkland, and we have seven acres. This would be a marvelous opportunity for Norbert to add to its green space and to really show how important open space is and land conservation is to the Norbert Borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we will move back. Mr. Callan, as soon as we get the Zoom stuff fixed.
Sure. Dennis Callan, Norbert Park. Question for you before I ask my question.
Sure.
Would it be better if you could come to somebody?
Oh, sure.
We appreciate your help, George.
All right.
They're telling me it would be better.
Thank you.
Dennis Callan, Norbert Park. Before I ask my question, I wanted to find out, how many waivers have been granted for this project? For stormwater management? There have been no waivers granted for stormwater management. There was a waiver granted in the tentative sketch plan phase to allow for a lot line that is not perpendicular to a street in the subdivision plan. So there's a lot line that goes along the stream as opposed to going straight and cutting across the stream, and so that waiver is granted. I believe there, there are some other lot issues, but they don't really require waivers. For example, the proportion of width to the length.
Dennis Callen, Narberth Park. Question for you before I ask my question.
Sure. Wouldn't it be better if you could come use the mic?
Oh, sure.
We appreciate your help, your voice.
All right.
Thank you.
Dennis Callen, Narberth Park. Before I ask my question, I wanted to find out, how many waivers have been granted for this project? For stormwater management? There have been no waivers granted for stormwater management. There was a waiver granted in the tentative sketch plan phase to allow for a lot line that is not perpendicular to a street in the subdivision plan. So there's a lot line that goes along the stream as opposed to going straight and cutting across the stream. And so that waiver is granted. I believe there, there are some other lot issues, but they don't really require waivers. For example, the proportion of width to the length is not optimal according to our subdivision code, but it does not require a waiver, from what I understand. So that is the one waiver. And there's, there's a small technical waiver about some of the documentation that is supposed to be submitted, which was granted.
Chris, thanks.
Who next? I'm sorry. Chris, that's right. Those are the two waivers? Or were there any other waivers? I don't want to misinform. At the tentative phase, were there any other waivers?
They are noted in the Borough Engineer's Review Letter. So there were, there were three waivers granted during tentative sketch. None of them were related to stormwater management. Do you want me to read to you where they were?
Please, since Mr. Callen asked.
One was 450-8D4 requiring profiles of existing roads adjacent to the tract. 450-21F requiring lotlines perpendicular to the right of way for the length of the side lotline. And 450-18E requiring that only 30% of the parking space be 9x18.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Chris.
Thanks for the additional detail. So I wanted to know, has the Borough and the developer addressed how it will impact our ability to maintain our MS4 permit as a Borough, considering stormwater management, as we all know, is something we don't have under control at this time. Thank you.
Okay. May I say, can we ask Eric Johnson to answer that question? We'll ask the fellow in here to answer that question. Oh.
MS4 is municipal sewer storm, sorry, here, municipal separate storm sewer system, AKA MS4. Okay, Eric, I think, I think you can go ahead, Eric.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, Eric, can you do, like, maybe put the, bring your phone closer, like? So, the MS4 permit regulates any stormwater that flows to the Borough-owned storm sewer system. This particular property discharges directly to the stream without entering the storm sewer system. So the proposed development is not going to have a direct impact on our permit.
Okay, so the answer, I believe, was that this does not have an impact on the Borough's permit because it does not discharge into the stormwater system, the pipe system that feeds into the water pipeline. It just has to feed into the stormwater system and feeds directly into the great, fabulous system. I don't believe there's any other questions. So before we have planning commissioner comments, there's one other issue I do want to ask about. It is about the issue, the one waiver that we are being asked to consider recommendation to counsel tonight is a waiver related to the, to the rate of absorption of water into the ground. And so what I'm wondering, if Mr. Yon, would you be able to explain to us what the nature of that waiver is and why it is necessary for you? Would you be able to explain that, please? Thank you.
This is for the five-foot radius, is that?
Pardon me?
Was this regarding the five-foot radius?
No, no, it's the waiver to the stormwater provision for the infiltration of water.
You're asking why is it?
Could you explain the need for that waiver? Why are you applying for that waiver?
So we're applying for the waiver because the Borough Engineer said we need to. In some municipalities, this is not a waiver. If I could just read this section of the code, it says infiltration may not be feasible on every site due to site-specific limitations such as solite. If it cannot be physically accomplished and if it is not professional, shall be responsible to show. This cannot be physically accomplished. We provided the infiltration test showing that it couldn't be. I believe the Borough Engineer has accepted that. And in some municipalities, that can be handled on the Township Engineer level. In this municipality, the Borough Engineer is asking for the waiver, and so we have asked for that. In some municipalities, it says a waiver is needed. In this one, it isn't. It's, it's interesting that this code section, which is in, you know, is a little different in each, is different from any other section. So one of the other waivers were as follows, where we asked for in the tentative sketch was a profile of the existing roads. It doesn't say there, if you can't do it, then ask for a waiver. But that's what the infiltration section says, because it recognizes that it's not feasible in all sites. And so this isn't an ask because we're trying to do something less. This is what the site allows, and the code recognizes that. And it's been granted on at least one other project in our borough.
Okay, thank you. If you want to ask either you or maybe Mr. Farmo, the code does request, does require you to request a waiver, which implies to me that someone has to consider giving you a waiver. You've argued that the waiver is necessary because of the site conditions, the soil conditions. But I would like to ask if you could explain why the community would benefit from granting this waiver. We understand that your development would benefit from this waiver, but can you explain why the community would benefit were we to grant a waiver, or recommend a waiver of this sewer?
The code doesn't require with any development application that the applicant demonstrate how a community is going to benefit from the development, or how the community is going to benefit from any particular stormwater management facility or stormwater management measure. The code requires that you comply with specific requirements. And as Mr. Yon has explained previously, we are complying with the Lower Merion Township stormwater management requirements, which are more honest and more conservative than in our birth requirements. We haven't asked to just comply with your requirements. We're complying with lower merions. As it relates to this one element of the requirements, namely the infiltration, in my view, as a legal opinion, the code's ambiguous. The code, on the one hand, says if you can't do the infiltration, you need to demonstrate that you can't do it. And if you can do it, then there's certain things that you can do. It also says in another section, this, this reference that you were just mentioning, Mr. Bressi, that, that a waiver can be requested. However, there are no standards that are enunciated in the code that would be required in order to obtain a waiver. Now, Penone Associates, the same engineering firm that Narberth uses, a different individual within the firm, has looked at Lower Merion's requirement and then has set forth a standard, which we agreed to meet. We haven't received any particular feedback to my knowledge, and Mr. Yon can correct me if I'm wrong, as to what Mr. Johnson thinks is appropriate if a waiver is to be granted under the Narberth code. But we believe that what we are doing is simply doing a development in recognition of the physical attributes of this site, which are not uncommon, and that's why the code specifically recognizes that not every site is capable of accommodating infiltration. So we're doing what we can, and we are addressing this, we believe, in a reasonable manner, as has been requested by Lower Merion, which we think also inures to the benefit of Narberth. And Mr. Yon has explained how we're handling the rate control for the 100-year storm for what is proposed here. I have no opinions or knowledge as to whether Hurricane Sandy is the new five-year storm, as has been discussed. We believe what we're doing meets code, that the waiver, to the extent that word is used in the code, is something that is contemplated, an applicant would be entitled to if it cannot exceed infiltration requirements.
Thank you very much. So what I'd like to do now is ask for any discussion by the planning commissioners. And we are obligated to, to counsel, this is obligated to take action on this, or to discuss with the applicant a, an extension of the time to consider the application. So I'd like to ask any planning commissioners, if you have any comments you'd like to make, or thoughts about what sort of recommendation you would like us to make to counsel about the development and about the waiver, which is requested. Anyone like to start? Sooner we start, sooner we finish.
Sure, I'll start. I find, as I have in previous presentations of this project, I find that this site is very highly constrained and that the, the, all signs point to no. If it were a beech wood, or one of those little matted gate falls, every time you look at any feature of this development, there's hair growing on it. And the, I've beaten the drum of traffic safety, but this evening, we've heard other concerns from planning commissioners and from, and from members of the, of the public, all of which are, I think, germane, and all of which point to a conclusion that this project should not be built on this site. Now, the alternative, the legal alternative is tricky, and I'm not qualified to comment on that. I'm an architect. I see things kind of in black and white from a, from a physical standpoint, not a legal standpoint. I leave it to others with more, more specific knowledge of the ins and outs of the negotiations that may be required to turn us from making a huge mistake into doing something that is economically and ecologically responsible. So my vote is to not recommend approval of this by the Borough Council. Thank you.
Would you go next?
Sure. I'm Heidi Boyes. I agree with Jim Cornwell. I think it's an overbuilt project design. I have always felt that. There's too much paving, the buildings are too big, and the access is not in the best spot for this lot. It seems to me that if a developer really wants to develop this site, they should consider going back to the drawing board. Maybe the property owner would consider sharing their driveway and finding a new way to the site from Elmwood. I mean, there, there are alternatives. And so I would say no.
Would anyone else? Jim? Sorry, I don't want to, like, pull the whole thing out. Jim, you first.
Yeah, I agree. This is, this site is, it starts off as a very environmentally sensitive site, and it, we shouldn't be making this worse. We shouldn't be putting any pressure on the site. In fact, this number of commenters have mentioned, there's a lot of potential for improvement on the site environmentally. If we de-channelize the stream, if we make it a wider rainbed. Normally, you'll get to tell people what to do in their private property, but when, but during the Sando process, we do get some things. So thankfully, that's where we are here, and we get to have something to say about it. And I would be a no-move on this too.
Hi, my name is Jen Gaislinian. Looking at this plan, you know, a waiver is not going to make the problem go away, the problem with the infiltration. I think what, rather, what the answer is, is to re-invision more environmentally sensitive site plan. I'm just echoing, you know, my comments here, but this plan is sort of, I'm sorry to say, but just like from another time. We're looking at plants now that are, have more vegetation than are, that sort of honor the property that they're on with more, you know, appreciation for its natural beauty. And this property, you have a piece of a bigger puzzle here. It's a, it's a piece of a creek that connects in both directions to other properties. So whatever goes in is going to come out downstream. And I think that, my vote would be no.
You don't need to.
I concur with the other comments, particularly if it rises.
I will read a note. Thank you, Adam. I will read a note that David Braumer sent me today. He is not able to be here. Since I cannot attend tonight's presentation, I have written these comments. I am ready to repeat the objections to the project I've expressed in previous meetings. Traffic parking, traffic pattern for ingress and egress to the site is dangerous and should not be permitted. Car is parked all too close to the traffic light. And though I appreciate comments made by the applicants, traffic consultant, the volume of traffic in our site will not be great. I fear that the design is still an accident, meaning to have it. A far more preferable approach would lead to access the site from Elmwood Avenue and to delete the proposed, or, curb comes from lately road. Density, I believe the design is simply too dense, and the number of units and the amount of built and curbs should be reduced. Extremely poor groundwater recharge characteristics on the site is clear evidence that this critical watershed adjacent to Indian Creek must be treated with more sensitivity than is shown in this scheme. Also, there's too much parking on the site. While I'm sensitive to the desire to provide for visitor parking, I do not believe we should permit more parking than is required by the zoning code. I do not believe we should allow any impervious, impervious coverage in a setback that's adjacent to the railroad midway road. Project community amenities, the project gives us the opportunity to provide additional public access along Indian Creek. Restricting this amenity to just residents in the project is not sufficient. Past year has shown us how valuable and desirable these pathways are. We should use this project as an opportunity to extend the existing path system. Also, during the scope of this project, we should require the developer to replace the adjacent dilapidated and obsolete pedestrian bridge across the creek. Although the bridge is not within the site's boundaries, replacing it should be part of the necessary infrastructure upgrades needed for development of property. These are the reasons I am opposed to the project as designed. Had I been able to attend tonight, I would vote against a recommendation of approval. That is state's comment. I will comment as well, and then I think we will have to have our motion to make a recommendation to counsel. My comment is, we're well aware this project was approved in the tentative sketch plan phase. It was approved because it conformed to the zoning code and demonstrated something that could be built according to our zoning code. But our zoning code is only one of several codes that guides what happens in Narberth. And it is unfortunate that the state land use laws and the Borough's subdivision ordinance starts with the zoning code. Really should have started with the soil tests. And we learned at the beginning that the water would not drain into the soil and would require a waiver. I think we would have saved six months of discussion. And I think that it is a shame that that's the way our processes are set up. Every time we turn around on this project, we see evidence that this scale and scope of this project is stressing the site beyond what its capacity can handle. The waiver is really the tip of the iceberg, canary in the coal mine, that this is simply not the right kind of development to build on this site, if there were any right development to build at all. The fact that the water will not percolate into the soil, whether it's because it's in a floodplain or because it is because of the soils themselves, is a sign that you should not be building six inches of housing and all of the parking spots on this site.
this site. And that the proper thing to do is not to re-engineer the site so that it can accommodate the water. The proper thing to do is to re-engineer the plant so that there's less built on the site. That's really the course of action that this waiver request suggests. I am not in support of granting a waiver so that this project can be built. I would be in support of reconsidering waiver if a different project came in, one that was much more sensitive to the land and to the concerns of this community. I will say also that among the many disappointments of this phase of project, the treatment of the creek is one of perhaps the greatest real, from my point of view. I was very disappointed in the applicant's response at our last meeting to the creation of a open space, a moat lawn next to the stream for the use of the residents of this property. Essentially, what you're saying is, they're building up on so much of the rest of the site, we have to create a lawn and a floodplain where everyone knows you don't build lawns. My answer to that is, don't put the lawn in the floodplain, build less, so that your occupants of your development can have open space in the areas where it's appropriate. I found the answer to the loss to be disappointing, a lack of creativity, and a lack of a real sense of time. It seemed to me that the answer was, we're going to do this and get in and get out. Those walls will be a problem. Those walls will be a problem for years to come. Whoever buys these homes is going to be stuck with having to constantly repair these walls as more and more water flows through, as the vegetation near the walls grows towards the walls, and the roots begin to damage the walls. That will happen. It may not happen in my lifetime, but it will happen, and someone's going to get stuck with the problem. And that's the lesson here. The way we do things sticks other people with problems, and at some point, someone has to say no. Tonight, I think we are all saying no. We're not going to recommend to council that they grant a waiver or approve the development that might meet our codes or closely meet our codes, but it's going to stick our community with problems down the road. So I will vote no for this project as well. So could I entertain a motion for a recommendation to council?
Yes.
Mr. Hornblatt.
Am I good? Okay, with a great sense of satisfaction that I move that the Narbor Planning Commission recommends against the approval of this project by the Borough Council.
And against the waiver as well?
And against the waiver as well.
Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second motion? Just a second. Any discussion of that motion, or any conditions or additional comments you'd like to pass on to council as part of the recommendation?
If I clarify, affirmatively, the vote is going to reject this plan?
All we do is make recommendations to council.
No, but I'm saying, you called for a vote. It's a yes vote to reject it?
Yes. Your motion, Jim, is to, is to recommend the council that we do not approve this plan and that we do not approve the waiver.
Correct.
We recommend to council that they not approve the plan and they not approve.
That's correct. That they not approve the plan.
Correct, that they should not approve the waiver.
Correct.
So a affirmative vote is to recommend to council that they not approve the plan and the waiver. Get it straight. Are there any other comments, anyone would like to pass on besides what's been discussed as part of the motion? Okay, I will summarize our closing comments and my transmittal to council. So all in favor of Jim's motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to Jim's motion? The motion carries. So the recommendations, the commission, the council will be to deny the, to recommend to council that the application would not admit the waiver being denied. So thank you very much. Okay. Anyone need to stretch?
Yeah. I hope yes.
Okay, you can go stretch. Well, now move on to the event. I think all of you were coming for it tonight. And I do appreciate your patience, as I said earlier, because of the time clocks built into the state law, we did have to take action on this tonight. And I hope you got a sense of how we work as well. So I have a business that I've been looking forward to, and that is important to all of us, is a discussion of historic district ordinance. If anyone needs to get up or come back, that's fine. What we're hopeful that we can do is have an informational conversation where we can explain to you what is in the ordinance, what it's about, how things work, and that if you have questions about that, that we could, we have an opportunity to explain and or discuss them with you. We have two people tonight who I'm really going to rely on to carry that part of conversation. Chloe Moore, at the end of the table, is from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And Chloe was really the lead drafter of the ordinance with the guidance of the planning commission and the borough solicitor. Kathleen Alwinop, who's sitting in the front row for the Lower Merion Conservancy, helped shape the definition of historic district and its interpretation of what it would encompass. Kathleen is a preservation consultant to, to many, to many communities. And Chloe is a planner who works with the borough on a range of planning, planning issues. I'm not sure which of you could start, but could one, I would appreciate if one of you could begin by giving an overview. Well, actually, you asked me to give an overview. I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to you.
Do you want me to come up?
Please. You're invited to come up. Depending on how you count, this process began 2017, or 20 years ago. The borough's been having a conversation about whether or not a historic district, a historic district ordinance, or historic preservation of some sort or another should be something that the borough embraces. There have been attempts to write historic district ordinances before, and they've not succeeded. This conversation again began about 2017, I believe, at the invitation, a couple of our council members invited the state Historic Preservation Office to, to come assess the potential for a, some sort of historic preservation regulation in Narbor. And we asked the state, and we asked the Lower Merion Conservancy to prepare a report of what, it was called a heritage action plan, actually. What kinds of tools should Narbor be considering to recognize and preserve its historic fabric? That plan, that, that plan came back to us, there was a, there was a community steering committee created, there was a workshop in this room, some years back, and that, that plan came back to us in September of 2019, I believe, or October of 2019. It came to the planning commission, which was discussed. And in the beginning of 2020, it seems like a long time ago, but a year and a half ago, the planning commission wrote a report and presented a report to council on its recommendations on how to follow up on that plan. And that plan had six major recommendations, one of which was to create a historic district. Another recommendation that I loved was to hire a mainstream manager, someone who could focus on recruiting and on working on the retail mix in our, in our downtown. There's a host of recommendations like that. Upon receiving that, the council authorized the planning commission to begin work on historic district ordinance. At that time, in the beginning of 2020, the planning commission recommended that it should be very limited ordinance, that the ordinance should really focus on teardowns, major demolition of major parts of buildings, and major additions. The planning commission did not recommend that a historic district should, should manage the architectural detail or the design of things. That was the general recommendation, the umbrella under which our council asked us to do our work. At that point, we waited for a while, because the state Historic Preservation Office was developing a new model ordinance. The state, as you all probably know, sets the framework for what municipalities can do. We just, Narbor can't just go pass any law once. It has to be enabled by state legislation to do certain things. And the state has a Historic District Act, which sets the rules for how municipalities can go about creating historic districts. So any municipality that wants to do that has to follow the rules that the state sets out in its laws. And the state Historic Preservation Office determined that there was a need for a new model ordinance that would fulfill the requirements of the state law that municipalities could start with. So I think we waited probably about eight or nine months until last fall, I think, until the state had that ordinance ready for us to look at. And that's when we really began looking at it. Probably starting then and into early 2021, we worked with Chloe, and we had several presentations and conversations with Borough Council about what an ordinance like this really should encompass. And many revisions. We, Narbor was the first municipality to work with this model code. And many revisions were made to this model code to suit our needs. We just didn't take the code off the shelf and say, let's use it. We said, how does it work, and what works best for Narbor? Over the course of that work, with guidance from council, several ideas emerged. One was that the purview of the ordinance should be even narrower than the planning commission recommended the first time. There was a council meeting in which one council member offered the notion that, at the moment, the best thing for Narbor's ordinance to cover is the removal of things, and that it should not busy itself with the adding of things. So removal of things means tearing a house down, tearing part of a house down, taking a dorm room down. But that it shouldn't, it shouldn't really concern itself with if someone wants to add new siding to their house or make changes like that. It was really about removing things. And so that really narrowed the scope. The other idea that emerged actually came from the heritage action plan as well, which was that the community could benefit from having free advice about how to fix up houses, both in terms of historic considerations, but also because this is important to Narbor in terms of environmental considerations as well. What material should I use? If I want to go green, how should I do it? And so the ordinance also, the proposed ordinance also includes the idea, which I don't believe was in the state code, the state ordinance, we added it, that some types of modifications would require an advisory, non-binding review, where you would come in and talk to an architect, and an architect would say, which do this, which do that. But the homeowner would not be required to follow that advice. It would just be sort of getting a free consultation about how you might work on your house. And so those are the two big ideas that emerged through our work with council. It evolved to the point where this spring, we had several further conversations with council about the process, about the scope, and ultimately got to the point where council was comfortable with, with the ordinance, probably around April. No, it's July. Yeah, probably around April. And we gave it to the borough solicitor, and the borough solicitor took a look at the ordinance and said, did you think about this? Did you think about that?
If you could a little louder and sound.
Sorry. I, I often forget that I need to do that, so thank you. So then the borough solicitor looked at the ordinance, and when the borough solicitor was satisfied with the ordinance, we presented it to council for their consideration. So that is the path, that is the path that we have taken. The, the main reason for doing this is, you know, we went to a great effort to create what we call the Form Bays Code, the new zoning code for, for Narbor, which I believe is the first code of this type anywhere in the states, and we're proud of that. But zoning code only manages so many things. It can only get so far. It doesn't, for example, like the council member pointed out, it doesn't necessarily regulate the taking away of things, it just regulates the building of new things. And the Form Bays Code does a pretty good job, all things considered, if you compare it to the alternatives of regulating what's built. Now, we're always tweaking it, we're always finding ways that it could be better, you know, we're constantly considering, you know, the metrics, the standards, the approaches. But as an overview, it doesn't do a, a bad job. But what wasn't anticipated, quite frankly, when the Form Base Code was passed, was that housing prices and land prices would get to where they are. It was sort of based on a, a, a less of an assumption about land values, because the Form Base Code's premise was we want to, we want to incentivize additions to houses, we want to incentivize the upkeep and upgrading of houses rather than the tearing down of houses and building something new. And it kind of worked in a certain economic environment, but as the economic environment has gotten out of whack, and you can, you know, tear down a less than average-sized house in Narbor and replace it for something, advertise it for $1.4 million, those things didn't work so well. So that was a reason for starting to look at these other tools that are available to municipalities, the tool of preservation, to give the, the homes and the fabric that we all love a fighting chance to, to survive. So that was, that was the kind of policy, the policy motivation behind doing all this, was recognizing that there was change occurring that couldn't totally be addressed through zoning, that if Narbor wanted to manage that change more aggressively, it needed to have other tools. And this, this was a tool that was available. So that's the story of how the code came to be, that's the story of why it came to be. So I guess what I'd like to ask is if Chloe and Kathleen are over there asking themselves, can we believe what he just said? If you could kind of describe to us what the district is, how it operates, how it impact people, and how those decisions were made, I think that would be that. And then we can, then we can add questions.
Thanks, Todd. I'm Kathleen Alwinop. I'm the Director of Historic Preservation. Thank you. At the Lower Merion Conservancy. The Conservancy is a nonprofit, serves the local community attached to Lower Merion and Narbor. And if you were here for the earlier part of the evening for the first application, you'll know that we have different mission areas, multiple mission areas. One is to help our, our local watershed, one is open space preservation, and one is historic preservation. And so as Todd ran through the, the history, I think, of how this came about, I'm not sure if you mentioned the advisory committee that we kind of started with, with this, this whole effort. And that was a group of residents in the borough who were appointed by Borough Council to act as kind of consultants. There were stakeholders in the borough who sort of had their, their eyes on the ground, were community leaders who had the ears of people in the community trying to learn, you know, what is it about Narbor that makes this place so special? And, you know, I think a lot of people understand that it, it's intangible in some ways. Narbor has a unique community character. I think that's sort of the, the conclusion of a lot of people who responded, it has a really unique community character that we want to preserve. You know, the next question would have been, what do you want to preserve about this? When you say historic district, it can be alarming to, to people in communities because it suggests really heavy regulation. And so the recommendations that came out of the heritage plan, which was created with the input of these stakeholders, was that the input of these stakeholders, was that residents of Narberth wanted to retain the character of the community. This was something, this intangible value is something really, really special to them. Main Street, they outlined residences. What they wanted to do in terms of regulating was sort of the next step. And as Mr. Bresley has acknowledged, the district is, has a lighter touch than most traditional historic districts. If you look to the seven districts that are in Lower Merion, you'll see that there are a lot of regulations or additional regulations that are associated or attached to that ordinance. As Mr. Bresley has noted here, the overriding objective of this ordinance was to slow down or discourage the demolition of these, these character-defining features. Usually you would apply that feature to a single building, but Narberth has a lot of character-defining features that make it what it is. And without those features, you don't have Narberth. So what, what is it that we're trying to protect? And the feedback that we got from the public through surveys, through an open house, through our stakeholders, through Planning Commission, and also through discussions with Borough Council, was that it's the traditional character of the borough. What is the traditional character? So we surveyed the borough. We took photographs of the borough. We studied the history of the borough. We did very intensive research on the borough. And what we landed on is the, the collection of buildings that were developed between the early to mid 1700s through about 1945. The overwhelming majority of those buildings were constructed in the, you know, first 25 to 30 years of the 20th century. But Narberth really, the look and feel of Narberth was really established during the late 1800s, when you see the gridding or the surveying and plating of streets north and south of the railroad. So these wide streets like Windsor that are intersected by perpendicular streets heading in both directions from the railroad station, the houses that were built along those streets, houses that had front porches, neighborhoods that had sidewalks. Most of the houses have detached rear-end garages. So that's what we were getting at when we were defining the character of the borough. The early development that sort of followed that pattern of development, that gridded pattern of development, was just north and south of the train station. And the train station is like the central sort of focus, because without the train station, we wouldn't have seen Narberth being developed in this way. The train provided access to the borough, which allowed for initially wealthy Philadelphians to come out and establish their homes. And a few of those homes dating to the early 1880s are still here. But developers followed suit, bought big chunks of land north and south of the railroad and created subdivisions, hired prominent architects, in some cases, to design these homes for prospective buyers. So they were more or less spec homes, but built by some notable and respected architects who really, some of them got their start in, in Narberth, building homes for, at one point wealthy, but then increasingly upper-middle class, and then middle class, and then, as you carry forward through the decades, working class. So Narberth has a phenomenally intact collection of buildings that document the entire evolution of the borough and multiple phases of development. What's interesting about it and what makes it, in many ways, so, so valuable is that all of these houses are different sizes, different styles, materials. They have, obviously they all have the same uses, but in the residential area, spanning a period of 50 years, they all follow the same, they largely follow the same pattern of development, which is that when they face the principal streets, they have these front porches, they have lawns, however small, you know, these are, lawns were something that the city folks were looking for. They're moving out from the cities and they want their little piece of grass. And most residences in Narberth date to that period between the late 1700s. And you find those resources really along Montgomery Avenue, which was the early settlement of Narberth. And then moving on into the interior, most resources sort of fit that pattern of development. And so there was long discussion about what we would call the period of significance, which was the period that sort of defined that development. But it was, at the end of the day, we settled on 1945 as the closing date, because it best represented the end of the period of that kind of development, with the kind of gridded pattern, the railroad-oriented, understanding, of course, that there are resources in the community that don't quite fit the profile of that. So you have a number of significantly sized apartments in Narberth, and we would probably call them like garden apartments. Now, they were identified as garden-style apartments back in the 1930s, early 1940s. Montgomery Court is one of them, a large one. There are, there's one, two on the south side. There's Narberth Hall, that's 1930. So they, although they're, they don't follow the signal family pattern of development, they're still, they're still located on these gridded streets. They're in residential neighborhoods, and they're meant to coexist and maybe even enhance the residential neighborhoods that they're in. So they, they are also included in the 1945 end date, includes, includes most of, you know, all of the, the buildings that were, apartment buildings that were constructed, the garden-style apartments. So I've done a lot of talking, but I can pass the microphone on to Chloe or Todd if you would like to open it up to audience questions.
I'd like Chloe to explain how it works.
Great.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chloe Moore. I work for Borough Council Commission and I'm here as Borough's ring phone and help with the ordinance. And I just want to speak briefly to you as many of your, like, the property owners in Narberth are wondering what does this mean for you and your property. The ordinance establishes a commission similar to the Planning Commission, the Shade Chamber Commission, the Environmental Commission. It's called the Historic Architectural Review Board. It'll meet, that group will meet monthly and evaluate various types of applications from owners who wish to, property owners who wish to do certain activities that are listed in the ordinance. Contributing properties in the district must obtain what's called a certificate of appropriateness. And the way they get that is they apply, have a meeting with the HARB, the Historic Architectural Review Board. The HARB makes a recommendation to council, and then council can approve or deny the certificate of appropriateness. There's a very limited list of what you need to follow that process for. Not a lot of things. If you want to demolish your property completely, knock down a building, you would need to apply, meet with the HARB. They would make a recommendation and you need to meet with council, and they would, they would make the final decision whether you could do that or not. If you wanted to take off a significant portion of the building, like take off a storey or take off a dormer, a bay window, take off the porch, you would also need to apply, have a review with the HARB, try to get a certificate of appropriateness. Because, just because you have to go through that process doesn't mean it's going to be denied. It's going to be reviewed, it's going to be discussed, it may or may not be denied. If you want to close off a door or a window opening, you would need to also go through that process. And that's about it. Most things that most homeowners would want to do do not require that type of review. The kinds of things that people are nervous about when they hear the words historic district, like, "Oh, I can't replace my windows and update my windows," that's not covered in this district at all. You can update your windows to whatever you want, and that's fine. Other kinds of things people hear about and are concerned, "Oh, I can't use a different roofing material." You can use a different roofing material that does not require a certificate of appropriateness, does not require this review by the HARB. So it's demolition and significant removal of parts of the building that require that. And again, you can still, you might still be able to do that, it just requires this review process. And there's a list of what they're, how they're supposed to review it, but it has to be something that's visible from the public way, from the street or the sidewalk. If it's on the very back of the building and you can't see it, they can't stop your, what your change that you want to make. So it's only something visible for the public's purpose of this. And that's consistent with state law. And then Todd also mentioned this non-binding advisory review process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you mind if we pause?
Sure.
Can we work on that one more time?
Yeah, okay.
Do you mind if I do that? Cause...
Okay. So the, the main part of the ordinance is that it might consent some burden to homeowners because of the certificate of appropriateness approved by the HARB and the council. So we want to focus on that for a minute. You want to say more about that, Todd?
Yeah, I just kind of want to do it over again one more time.
Sure.
So to determine whether you would need to apply for certificates of appropriateness, there are a couple of filters. I'm going to try and tie it together. One is, are you in the historic district? Most houses are. Sorry. Thank you. Are you in the historic district? Most houses are, but that's the first question. Second, is your property what's called a contributing resource? Which means it would have been built before 1945, for the most part. If your house was built after 1945, even if it's in the historic district, it would be excluded. So it's two, first two filters. Third filter, which Chloe mentioned, and I do not want to let it go unmentioned again, is the ordinance would only apply to portions of your property that are visible from a public way, from a street, and are in the first or second lot layer of your property. Which essentially means if you have things in your backyards, like an addition, like a garage, like a shed, it's not, it would not be, it would not require a certificate of appropriateness. It's only things that can be seen from the street, in the front part of the lot, if you're in the district, if your house is built before 1945. So those are the first filters. And then, in the ordinance, just to clarify, you know, to provide detail about what Chloe said, there's 12, 12 things that are, that are covered. One is changing a building's footprint by removing building volume. That means tearing part of a building down or all of it down. Changing a building's height by demolishing whole or partial stories. That means making your building lower. If you're going to build it higher, that's okay. If you want to add to your house, that's okay. Changing a building's volume by removal of towers, turrets, those lovely turrets, or spires. Changing the shape, slope, or configuration of a building's roof or roofline by removing dormers or filling in sneaking torches, with little notches on the second floor of the building. Removing or concealing decorative roof or cornice treatments, including brackets, grovels, or cornices. That means you want to strip things off your house that are those decorative features that we require. If you want to replace them, that's okay. But if you just want to take them off, then you would need a certificate of appropriateness. Removing or enclosing porches, porticoes, or stoops. In most areas of the borough, the zoning code already precludes you from enclosing your porch. So it's a little change, but not a lot. Removing porch roofs. Removing or concealing porch columns, posts, or other vertical supports. So again, you could replace a column, but if you want to remove a column from your porch, that would require a certificate of appropriateness. Removing or concealing porch railings, valley strays, or walls. Again, just removing them, if you want to replace them, that's fine. If you want to fix them up. Removing permanently attached canopies. Removing window openings or bay windows, or concealing windows or window openings. Basically, you would require a certificate of appropriateness. And that's, and also removing exterior door openings or concealing exterior doors. That's because one of the important features of houses in Narberth is their doors and windows and the way they connect to the street. And by filling all those in, we don't have that kind of character anymore. If you want to add more, if you want to replace your door, if you want to replace your window, that's fine. It's just closing it off. And again, it's only in the visible from the street and in the front part of your house. If you want to do it in the back, that's fine. No certificate needed. So those are the 12 things that are, the 12 types of alterations for which a, a certificate would be required. Last time we asked the zoning officer, I think he estimated fewer than one application a week. I think the last count we got was higher than that, but then we took some things out of the list, and so it's probably down to about maybe 40 cases a year at most of these things happening in Narberth by his, his estimate. So we tried to reduce it, a council suggestion, down quite a bit. So that is, that is what it says. And another thing Chloe had mentioned is that over time, it is, it would be possible for the staff to manage these things without having to go formally to the HARB or to council, that the staff could, the application could be signed off on by the staff. And that would kind of be a next step, is to evaluate which, which actions can be managed in, in that way. So that is the, the list of alterations that are proposed in the code to require a certificate of appropriateness.
Thanks for that time. We will take other questions and comments. There is another process outlined in the ordinance that is a non-binding advisory review. For certain types of alterations, the main one here that's going to come up is probably building additions. There, you have to have a meeting with a staff member designated by council who has some expertise in architecture and historic preparation. All that's required is that you attend this meeting. You can disregard all of the advice. There's no follow-up on whether or not you've done any of the things they provide, and it's the hope that this would be a really helpful opportunity for the homeowners to get a consultation with an expert on wanting something about their property. And it's, again, the meeting is required to get your building permit, but no other, there's no follow-up on whether you implemented the suggestions of the person you know of. And so that would be for any addition, if you want to put on a building that is visible from the street. If you want to punch through the wall and put in a new window or door... And so that would be for any addition, if you want to put on a building that is visible from the street. If you want to punch through the wall and put in a new window or door that is not there already, that would require a view. And do you want me to read the whole of this file?
Yep. There are 10 things, please read those 10 things.
Sure, I would be happy to do that. And it's right here. Changing a building's footprint by the addition of building volume. Changing a building's height by the addition of whole or partial stories. So that's, also those are taking an addition on your property. Changing a building's volume by the addition of towers, turrets, or spires. Changing the shape, slope, or configuration of a building's roofline by the addition of dormers, sleeping porches, or similar features. Adding porches, porticoes, stoops, or roofs above porches and stoops. Adding exterior doors, windows, or bay windows. That's new, that are now existing. Changing the size, shape, or configuration of steps, stairs, or entryways. Installing or altering ramps, lifts, or other accessibility features. Changing the number size replacement of exterior door openings or window openings. And changing the number size replacement of window openings to be door openings. So those would all require an advisory review meeting with a professional, and then you could pull your building permit. And if you needed to go through the regular land development process, sometimes an addition. No, only if it's a non-residential property. It would just be a building permit for residential property. You would have your non-binding advisory review meeting, and then complete what you needed to do for your building permit as already is required by the code. That's pretty much my summary of what, what the impact would be to property owners. How do you want to receive from your job?
I think let's, let's take, let's take questions. Let me, before we start, what are you hearing?
Oh. Any grammatic questions?
Okay, let me, let's stand over here. Okay, so we're going to do this the way we did it with Ray. We'll take questions from the audience here. And then we will, because it just works better technically, then we'll take questions from people who are watching on Zoom. So if you are watching on Zoom, please indicate in the chat that you would like to ask a question. And our manager will keep track of that. And then once we finish with questions here, we will go to Zoom. Now, in order to kind of keep this orderly, what I'll do is start at the front, go across and across the rows like that, so we make sure we don't miss anybody. So I'll start here. And I think the first question I see, and is you. And I'm afraid we have to ask you, if you come up and speak with a microphone, please.
Do I have to do anything? Do I have to?
Yeah, I think it's working.
I'm Janet Fraser, I live on Marion Avenue. And I'm an ex-history teacher for 31 years, so I really like history. But this notion of a historic district just made my, I just went, like my hair stood on end. And I think the reason is because, number one, to me, Northerne, what's special about Northerne is it's a walkable urban community. It's not the buildings. I mean, there are a lot of really crummy, crappy, ugly buildings in Northerne. You don't say, oh, isn't that quaint? Uh-uh, not about Northerne. You don't say, oh, isn't it beautiful? I mean, you get an occasional house that somebody, especially recently, has fixed up, and it looks great. But that's not all of them. There are some really ugly ones. But sometimes I walk around Northerne and I take my finger and I pretend I had an explosion. And I go. Because there are so, there are ugly houses. There's one on, I think it's Conway and Sabine.
Ugly as in the eyes of a holder. Please, let's not point out the rest of our neighbors and neighbors. So.
We do need to keep this orderly. And I don't think it's appropriate to interrupt speakers, even if you agree with them. So let's let them speak, we'll go around the room. And I just need to ask you, we have a lot of people who want to speak, so please make your, try and make your points concise later.
Okay, so I have just one other point. So I think a lot of this sounds like, the advice stuff sounds great. I'm just, you know, that somebody would define the history when, when it's just such a jumble. Northerne is not a unified historic, I mean, you can say, okay, everything was built between this time and this time, but it doesn't have a unified style. There are a lot of porches, but they're very different. So I have a little trouble with it. Otherwise, some of the more specific stuff, as long as you don't make a lot of rules, you know, as long as you let people create the house for their family, that works. I'm okay with this whole notion. It's just that when you start saying, well, you've got, you can't remove that cornice, and you can't enclose that porch, and you can't, you know, do this or do that, then I get worried about it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go, as I said, zigzag along the rows here. So the next row is the second row, and we'll go that way across the rows, so you are next.
Are you still on turn, Todd?
Nope, nope. Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to speak? Okay, I apologize. Oh, wait, Dave, it's Dave, Dave, okay. Your turn, Dave. Just, Dave, we just want to ask if you can, your day.
No, I'm sorry. I'm in big trouble.
Apologize.
I'll leave on my own. And I'd like to say that historic to me means something before 1900s. You stated Northerne is here before 1900. The rest of the area is simply developed, much like any other suburb of Philadelphia. So I don't think it deserves an historic, uh, name. Secondly, what you've proposed here is two layers of regulation. I go a meeting, council wants to approve something, so that's two ordinances. And the 12 things that you mentioned, uh, makes some sense if you're a permit, but I thought the zoning code permits for removing, wrecking your house and adding things to it. I thought it kept this footprint of the home intact. Am I correct in that? No, I thought that's how you revise the zoning code. Well, anyway, I think the historic designation is a wrong one, setting what things are unnecessary and having more rules and regulations. For example, you say fees can be added later, and you don't have any additions. Stop. If something's historic, I don't think it should have solar panels on the roof. I don't see historic to me. It would have a slate roof, say 1910. Not some composite green roof or solar panels. So I think probably ordinance is not in favor of history, is in favor of regulation to what people see from the street. Thank you.
Okay. Please can go a second right now. Well, wherever you can, as long as you can use this.
So my name is Pam, I was a, I'm a real estate agent in Northerne. I lived here my whole life. My parents were raised here. I'm a true Northerner. Here's the thing, when you start making all these rules and regulations, you're kind of creating a homeowners association. And nobody lives here. If somebody wants rules and regulations, then you go and live in a place where they monitor the things you kind of can't do to your property.
Now, I don't understand really how this came about. Like, I hear you, you two talking about all this stuff and all these things you did, but I lived here my whole life, I didn't hear it in the meeting. Nobody asked me, in my opinion, and I don't know if they asked anybody else. Did anybody else know that before we got the letter in the mail the other day?
No, it's been going on for years, for years and years and years.
What's been going on? Talking at the council meetings?
Sorry, everyone, the public comment needs to be directed to the planning commission.
My question is, don't you think this should be something that the whole town? Like, this should be voted on? It's not really up to you guys, to you two, to decide what the rest of us can do to our houses. You know, I mean, if someone likes contemporary, they like contemporary. If they like Victorian, they like Victorian. But what, I don't understand where you feel like you should have the right to tell people what they kind of can't do to their property. I don't, and I heard all the history lessons and everything, and that's great, it's interesting. But it doesn't, it's not, there are not rules and regulations here. There's zoning rules and things like that, but you're going to, you know, this is going to be something that quite possibly may lower the value of homes here. Because people don't want to be ruled in their own house unless they go to an HOA. Unless they go to a place that has condo association and an HOA. And then they, then they have to follow the rules. But that's not, what, everybody that moved here, that lives here now is going to be subject to this without any say? I mean, if the majority of people want it, then there should be a vote, I think. I think there should be a vote from the whole town. I don't think it's something that you can just force on everybody just because that's what you think. I mean, I respect your opinion. You have yours, I have mine, but just because you think that doesn't mean the whole town thinks that way.
Can I respond as the consultant? So I. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
No, we're waiting to let you finish.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, I appreciate your comment, and I appreciate the comments of, you know, of every member of the public. I was brought in here as a preservation consultant. So it is my professional opinion that the district meets the qualifications of the historic district as outlined in the proposed ordinance and as outlined in the policy that the State's preservation office has created. But I'm not voting on any of this. This is something, your comments really should be directed at the planning commission and at the Borough Council. I'm a professional preservation consultant, and based on my findings, this is my professional opinion. But again, I'm not, I'm not part of the voting process.
Well, nobody is.
So, thank you.
Not us are.
Well, I was asked about that. You know, we were asked as consultants to help the Borough develop this ordinance. So this is at the direction of council and the planning commission, and we put this together for you. And it's the planning commission and council that votes on it, and it's an appointed body of residents that will monitor this throughout time, not us.
Thank you. And I should also clarify, as I said earlier, this is not a meeting where the planning commission, who is appointed by council to advise council, is making any recommendations. We've already recommended this to council, and council's already advertised it as potential ordinance. And so when you ask who decides, who decides is council. Borough council decides that, and, which is, you know, the way many things in the borough are decided.
Yeah, but you guys made the recommendation without.
Um, you know, I, I don't, I think we gave a very long recitation of four years of a process that we went through, with many meetings at Borough Council, probably almost monthly conversations with the planning commission. So it's not as though this, this is, this is, this is something that's, that's come out without anybody being consulted. And we're having this conversation now so that people can be consulted about it as well. But these, this is not something that has come out of the blue. It's something that's come through many, many years of, of conversations with council and the planning commission, a community steering committee that, that lasted for about a year in a process that, around 2018, that began to shape. So I, I think you may, you may feel like you haven't heard about it, but it's not as though this was done, this was done in a way that, that didn't provide opportunities for people to hear what was going on. I also want to clarify, the zoning code is set up so that the rules that govern new construction are meant to result as closely as we can in the types of houses that we have already. That's the general thrust of it. And that's opposed to the kind of houses you might see being built currently in other communities. You can even look in parts of Northerne, where right up until the zoning code was passed, people were building houses with garage doors right in the front of their house, which isn't the way things are done in Northerne. And as soon as the code was passed, that stopped. And so the code is meant to guide new construction and new development in a way as well as we can, because we cannot do the zoning code, design every building, reflects the form and the pattern of houses that already exists. That is why this proposed ordinance doesn't really deal with new construction or additions. It only deals with taking things away. Because the zoning code does not really address that question. It doesn't address tearing houses down, tearing parts of houses off, closing in things, except for porches, which the zoning code generally prevents porches from being enclosed. There's a few cases where that can happen, but by and large, porches still cannot be enclosed. Whether or not this ordinance passed, the zoning code precludes that in almost every case. So that's just a few bits of information about the interaction between the zoning code and what's proposed. So the action, by the way, for those of you who are concerned about it, is the action that council will take when it votes on this ordinance. That vote could happen in July, or it could happen later. It's really in council's hands right now to determine when and if it will vote on this ordinance. So that is the actual action, is, is council voting on this ordinance. It was advertised as part of a legal process that allows there to be a public hearing. The actual ordinance is out there for people to discuss. But the action is the action that council would ultimately take sometime in the future. So. We're going to keep going around. In the, in the second row, Mr. Grove.
I come from another country, you can tell by my accent. And I come from a country where there are lots and lots of controls on even what color trash can you could put in. I'm not advocating that. But when I look at Northerne, I see that Northerne is one in a thousand villages. Not only its community and its spirit, but how it looks. Northerne is a collection of houses that have been built from early in the 1800s through to today. And everybody who comes to Northerne, when they come to that tunnel and see this vista of this ribbon lost village, and then they drive around, they love it. Now, I've driven a lot around Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and New York. And I've seen the villages where there aren't these careful controls on extreme building. They are horrible, endless ribbon developments. They are settlements with gaps in them where a nice house once was, or a nice small house once was. And there is a modern, build it as cheaply as you can, as sterile looking as you can, and put as many families in it as you can, sticking in the middle of a street. There are two or three of those already in Northerne. Some from many decades ago that still look ugly. Still look like blocks of concrete. They're cubes with as many people. Northerne is such a special place, it needs care. Many of you probably disagree with me, but I have seen some really ugly things done in the, in the, in the, the voice of progress. We must keep Northerne. We must keep Narburg as lovely as it is, that's my view.
Thank you, Gigi. So we'll keep going around this row. Did you, okay, now we'll go to the third row. And we will sweep this way, and I see, please come up.
Hi, good evening. I am Nora DiCristiano. I'm a resident on Dudley Avenue. I have three children under six and I live in a thousand square foot home. It was my first home that I've ever bought and it's really hard to buy in this market right now. So I'm very grateful to have bought in Narburg and to own what I have. But putting, but trying to make an addition on my home is extremely difficult already to begin with. So I am not for HARP for that very reason. I am also a realtor. Hold on, sorry, gotta get my notes here. I'm also a realtor and an investor newbie in Narburg because of people who are not for the tear downs and new construction. And I have to say, I'm not all for that as well. And I want to create, us to think of other solutions to help these homes, the ones that are dilapidated that everyone's talking about. There's people who have lived here for 50-plus years and they cannot upkeep the old materials that they're, you know, with their homes. Like, some of these have real structural damages. And they don't have, they have either fixed income or, you know, they just can't afford upkeeping the old architect, you know, homes that were built in 1915 or whatever. My house is 1915 and, you know, I'm lucky to have an upgraded home inside, but I mean, I definitely lack the space. So HARP is trying, and I, and I, as a realtor, I also deal with this, helping buyers buy homes in neighborhoods that have the worst historic preservation. And it definitely decreases the home. I definitely have a leverage to negotiate down the price. Because now HARP is telling them what to do with their homes and who wants that. There's definitely others, you know, other lists of things I could go on a tangent or a tangent on, but it prevents affordable housing here. Everybody's already, I have friends here who rent. They can't buy here already. So that's why I feel like I'm grateful to buy what I have bought. It's gonna make it a more elitist, more than it is to live here in Narburg because they cannot afford the materials and what they have to do. And now they have to go through this long process of getting things even more proofed when we already have issues with zoning and, you know, funding zoning people to actually review the plans. I've learned, I'm learning that now as an investor in real, in Narburg. Trying to not save a house from being torn down, but even just going through the process of trying to, you know, have it look like the house across the street. It's not even, I'm not even allowed to do that. I have to go do a variance and time is money. It's not like I'm a millionaire like some of these developers. I'm literally trying to save this house and try to make it modernized for the modern family. And, you know, we just had a pandemic. Everybody is working from home. We need space for people to work at home and to raise our families. So I just really challenge all of us to really think of another solution. I think this is gonna hurt our economy in the borough. This is not going to stop developers tear down homes in new construction. This creates a blanket HOA, like Pam has said. It's not exactly a monthly fee, but in the long term, the cost of materials that are to be approved by the HARP are gonna be very expensive, but maybe not so much because of, you know, some of the 12 items that you have on there. Not everyone knows this, this happening in Narburg and how it affects them personally. I know you guys have been talking about this for years, but it's not marketed correctly. There's an issue there. This is gonna oppose the law that is taking away residents' property rights and it's a negative impact. And it's already hard enough to, you know, like I said, get things through the zoning. So we have to talk about that. And why is it just council and planning commission to approve this? Like, like Pam is saying, I mean, we all live here, we're taxpayers. We have the right to say what we, what can and can't do on our own property. And, you know, save, you know, but then also save, you know, the birthplace of Narburg or Seabine Park and look at everything. I look at the town of Narburg, it's hometown America. Like, where have, Bricklands is gone, the, the, what was that? The gas station is gone, that parking lot. It's like all these, you know, high rises, the apartments. Now the dense population is gonna be an issue here. I mean, I know we want to have this Viking town, but is that a reality? I mean, that's just so many other issues to think about. And I really challenge us for all to come together and to create other solutions, like a GoFundMe page or something for somebody's dilapidated homes to help them renovate their homes. I'm just, I'm just trying to create other solutions other than have a blanket HARP over the borough because that's not going to help us long term. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify a few things. The proposal does not cover additions. It does not cover materials. It does not cover zoning. So I just want to be sure...
It creates a time to go from a month to three months to six months now for me to have somebody tell me what I want to do in my apartment.
Excuse me, excuse me, you'll have a turn next, okay? So I would like to clarify that if you are concerned about the materials you can use, if you're concerned about building an addition to your house, you would not be part of this process at all. The process does not apply to people who are fixing up their houses, replacing things in their houses, adding to their houses. Because there's already a building code and there's already a zoning code. And if there's challenges with the zoning code, we'd love to hear about them, but that is a different topic. We are always eager to hear where the zoning code is working and not working for people because that's what we do. We try to make the zoning code work. You can come to any planning commission meeting. In the public comment period at the end of the meeting, you can come and say, "I'm having this trouble with my house. I'd like to add to it, but there's a problem with the code." And we'll look at it. So if you're having problems with zoning, that's the place to come. But again, I've said this before and I'll say it again. This is not the HARP, this is not the kind of process you may encounter in Lower Marion. It's not the kind of process you might encounter in Philadelphia. It's not a process where if you're concerned about someone telling you what kind of window to use, what kind of material to use, how to add to your house, it's not a process that will, that will involve those kinds of activities. The only things that would be involved are the, are the activities that, that we listed earlier. So I think it's important, if you want to speak, to be sure that you're speaking to the ordinance that we are talking about. I understand people's concerns, but we've heard these concerns from people. We've heard them from council and we have, we have tried to come up with proposals. And so it's important to speak to the ordinance that's on the table. So with that, I'll pass it on. Sir, you're next. Could you please come up so that you could speak into the microphone?
Thank you. My name is Alex Magani. You can probably tell that I also did not grow up over here. I grew up in a country where you did not have property rights. Only Mike was right. Anybody could encroach on your property. I love this country because it respects individual property rights. Those are enshrined in the constitution. And there are people who know the constitution better than I do. So that's the first point. Your concern, sir, about there could be ugly constructions, the Form Based Zoning Code is very malvoted. I'm specifically referring to Article 1H, Article 3, Article 5, that has all of the building standards. You have to have a porch that's open. You cannot create size, cannot create window sizes that are not in harmony with the rest of the architectural character of Narburg. The zoning, the Form Based Zoning Code is very, very prescriptive, but I do agree with you that it's about new buildings, right? It does not provide adequate protection for demolition, I understand that. But is that such a huge problem? I have some prepared remarks that I want to make. I think a vast majority of Narburg residents, actually, before I say that, I want to also speak to the proposed ordinance article and clarify one point that you made, I think, which is a little misleading. You mentioned that additions is not covered under the ordinance. I'm speaking to Article 9 of the ordinance that says that if you want to do an addition, and this lady very graciously read the 10 things that are listed here, that if you want to do those, you have to have an advisory review. That's a mandatory review that needs to happen. You have to apply as a homeowner for that review. If I want to add an external window, I need to apply, just not just doing an addition. If I want to add an external window, I need to apply for this advisory review. And that process by legislation can take up to 50 or 50 plus because there are 40 calendar, there's a five day period, there's a 40 calendar day period, there's another five day period. So that adds 50 plus days before the permitting process can proceed. It's a gating item for the permitting process. So I'm speaking to the ordinance, sir. I think you are misleading people when you're saying that additions are not in this ordinance. They are, there are nine other things that are not just additions. And the lady graciously read those 10 things. Now let me read some prepared remarks. So yeah, that's a burden, 50 plus days in addition to the permitting process that's also very onerous to begin with because you have to meet all of the requirements of the Form Based Zoning Code, which is very extensive. So going through permitting in Narburg is not easy. You probably saw what those guys experienced right before us. And, and so what I'm saying is that we have a lot of regulation already in place. Now, I think a vast majority of Narburg residents want to preserve the architectural character of Narburg. I think we already have the protection of architectural character. I'm not talking about demolition, but I'm talking about architectural character in the Form Based Zoning Code. Our Narburg government needs to trust its residents to do the right thing. They also have a right to create history and add their own touches to the architectural heritage of Narburg. If certain homes, churches, buildings are of historical significance, then a list should be made in the remedy and that could be in the form of an ordinance such as this one, should be targeted to those structures. Any homeowner who wants to add their name to that list should be allowed to do so. If you really care that, you know what, after I die, my house did not be demolished, add your name to that list, okay? Why include almost every house in Narburg in this legislation under a broad brush stroke type language? It basically says in essence, "We don't trust you, the homeowner, to do the right thing, so we will regulate you even more. Please don't create additional bureaucracy, red tape, fees, and whole nine yards to solve a problem that is being made to look larger than it actually is." Everything has a finite life. Steve Charles said that one of life's biggest inventions is death. I mean, I'm paraphrasing, but he's like, that death is in Stanford speech that he gave to Stanford graduates. He basically said death is one of the biggest change, biggest innovations or inventions of life. So that's something to think about. Demolition, I'm too very concerned about that. But let's have a targeted remedy. Let's not have each and every house that was built before 1945 fall under this historic district. The real issue is builders and real estate sharks. They find vulnerable sellers, gobble a property, and then figure out ways to navigate through the Form Based Zoning Code to actually find, get variances, get waivers, and build what probably may not be in the spirit of what's intended by the Form Based Zoning Code. We have to focus on that issue. Maybe a GoFundMe or maybe give tax breaks to residents who are poor or cannot do the upkeep. Give them incentives so that they do that. Think of a better solution. I don't have a solution, it's a tough problem. And I really am appreciative of the intent. I know that everybody's heart is in the right place. So I'm not being derogatory about that. I recognize that everybody wants to do the right thing here, but I feel that this ordinance opens up the door to more bureaucracy and more regulations, more fees, and that infringe on individual property rights. Mission creep is a huge concern. You may start off saying that, you know, "This is pretty soft, not gonna have much of an impact", but you have let the camel put his nose in the tent. Very soon, the whole camel will be inside the tent. So just keep, keep eyeing on that. So I think the proposed Narburg District ordinance is too broad. The proposed ordinance also acts extra, adds extra process steps for homeowners who want to do an addition. Just like Nora, I also lived in a thousand square feet house which was built for the working class, probably not for the rich. And, but that's okay. But we should not be subjected to more red tape and more bureaucracy. Thank you.
Hi, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get some clarity on who the decision maker is here, exactly. Is it...
Okay.
Okay, so...
Borough council.
Okay. So what impact does our input tonight have on any of the decision making about this?
Well, first of all, this is not the official public hearing for this. The official public hearing is July 21st. To the extent council members are watching this meeting, then they'll hear what you have to say. So this was not meant, I mean, this is a public meeting, so anyone is free to, welcome to make comments. But this was really meant to be an informational meeting where we could explain, explain the ordinance and answer questions. So we have already voted on this and made a recommendation to council. But felt it would be important to have an opportunity to explain this to folks. And so that's what we're here for, if...
So it was just an information session?
Well, like I said, it's a public meeting and so anyone can come and make any comment. The comments people have made are entirely appropriate, but this is not the official public hearing. Gigi, you're next, but I would like to respond to one thing. You know, I, I understand that these processes are complicated. Sometimes they seem onerous. But one thing I do not think is appropriate is to say there are favors traded. I think that's out of bounds. We do not trade favors. That would, that would imply corruption. And I really don't think that's appropriate to say that this borough operates by trading favors with developers. We don't do that. There are times when developers come and they ask for relief under procedures that are established by the law, as you heard this evening. And the question we ask is, "What is the public benefit for what you are asking?" And they couldn't answer it, could they? This is what we always ask. We don't trade favors. We try to make sure if we, as a planning commission, are taking a discretionary action, that we ask and have a good answer. What is the public benefit for this action? I don't know where the favors would occur. A variance is a separate procedure. It's prescribed in law, as is a special exception. A variance is a procedure which is outlined in the code in certain circumstances and there are processes by which those are adjudicated by, not us, by the zoning hearing board. I'm guessing there's no favors traded there either. That isn't really a judicial process, almost. So it may seem that people come and they ask for special consideration, but they do that through processes that are established in the law. They're adjudicated through those processes. And the question that I always make sure we ask here at least, is there a good public reason for doing that? I don't think we, we do favors. So I think that, well, you may feel a variance is not appropriate or a waiver or a special exception. Those are done through processes that are dictated by law and transparent. Gigi?
Do you mind if I use the daisy to compare that? The wrong license, my notes are all, I'm sorry. I actually have questions.
Okay.
So if we could begin, and thanks so much. And just for the public's information, that historic overlays or historic districts are zoning. So make no mistake, when we talk about zoning and historic, they're kind of the same. They sort of feed into each other, like the way the zoning and the comprehensive plan work together. So it's a very similar understanding of how those processes work. Okay, let's talk about this. This has been sold to the community, by members of this planning commission and by council members via social media and beyond, as absolutely preventing tear downs. That's why we must do this immediately and do it sooner rather than later. And what I want to say is that Kathleen explained to everyone, and Jim, I think, somebody explained it, that this is really slowing down. It's just gonna slow it down because under Pennsylvania law, you know, you have a right to property rights. And so with some, I'm sure, some amount of litigation, there will be continued tear downs. I know why. I know why because I actually served on council during the time when Mr. Bressi and others here were charged with having a discussion around historic preservation. And although I might argue with Mr. Bressi about the finer points that he gave us earlier, motivation and all being very different from my side than his, as he remembers it. I will say, Kathleen, I would like to have a quick question to you. Nineteen forty-five, it was presented at the public meeting that I watched, that nineteen forty-five was presented by President Utterick and certainly not by this body or by yours, by your expertise. And he made this announcement, and so what I'd like to know is, and he has now answered an email, a member of the community has asked him why nineteen forty-five was selected and what processes he went through, what policies and process and expertise he sought in choosing nineteen forty-five. So I was wondering if that was you, and if it wasn't you, who it was. And we all know under Pennsylvania law, under planning commissions, that if you did have a conversation with him on telephone or in any other way regarding this, you are supposed to keep notes that could be presented to the public. So if that happened, I would like to see those notes regarding nineteen forty-five, if that's possible. That's number one. Number two is, what is the fee for all of the review and the process? We haven't mentioned that fabulous dollar amount, and that's, I think, some of the concerns of the community. So if somebody could put a dollar amount to it, I would appreciate that. And what are the penalties? I have neighbors who have taken down their cornices. It's true, it has happened. And they have replaced them with other things. And so tell me, who's the regulating body behind this? And tell me, what do those fines and reparations and ideas look like? Now, we do know that some folks, some people have enclosed their porches and have been approached to change it back to have an open porch. We know that happened in the community. So I'd like to know what the penalties and fines and what the governing body, who the governing body is. And then I would like to say that while we have this conversation of changing properties, is it really, we took great pains on Borough Council to have a conversation regarding the sunlight on Haverford Avenue and what that actually was doing. If you built up too high on the side of the street where there was sunlight, and then our neighbors during the winter across the street, that ice would never melt and there would be snow mountains till April. And that was a great concern to the community, and we took that absolutely seriously and absolutely, Mr. Brower and others set forth and put together a plan and a policy. I would suggest to this planning commission and historic, whoever this is, that you actually apply the sunlight study to some of the residential properties. The idea, because right there on Dudley Avenue, someone has built a fabulous gigantic spot that now blocks the sun from the neighbors across the street. So I would suggest that may be something that you could take on. Okay, here's the statement. We might actually be preserving things that unintentionally we don't want. And it happens with all ordinances and all legislation, that it winds up actually, you know, there are pieces of it that didn't come out right in the wash. And so it's my understanding, and I'm not a Facebook user, that members of our community and council members, and maybe some planning commission members, were attempting to have a conversation regarding equity, diversity, and inclusion, and tried to engage that community. And that's really about race, right? Let's have that conversation. So, and they wanted to know, and everybody wants to, why are we so darn white? What happened to the extreme whiteness of the main line? Well, it's not a mystery. There were some things actually put in place called redlining, discrimination, exclusion, classism, all here. And historically, historic preservation has been used to keep those four things right in place and to keep people of color and to keep women out of the conversation of property ownership. And absolutely, I caution you that if you want to have this conversation at any point, we are absolutely preserving the whiteness of this community from nineteen thirty forward, nineteen twenty forward. And remember, this was once called Hungry Town. It wasn't always called Narbor of the Million Dollar Homes. I caution you to include some amount of ideas and thinking around race, equity, diversity. And you might not want to pass something, as we're all aware of this, that doesn't have inclusionary thesis. Thank you.
Since you raised a question on nineteen forty-five, I just checked with Kathleen. The report that Cory and Kathleen originally wrote that was delivered in the fall of twenty nineteen, she reminded me, recommended that a preservation ordinance go through about nineteen forty. So that actually came from them, that idea. The planning commission, in reviewing that and forwarding it to council, determined that we would like to stretch that a little bit to capture a little bit of the post-war construction to nineteen forty-five. So those ideas were established pretty early on, twenty nineteen, early, early twenty-twenty. I don't know that it is right to give the council president any ownership of that idea. I think those ideas can be traced to our report from January twenty, twenty twenty, and the consultant's report from the fall of twenty nineteen, which are still accessible on the webpage. And a lot of give and take, as you know, if you watch the planning commission over the last few months, about what that date should be in our public meetings. It evolved through those kinds of conversations.
Could I add something to that?
Sure.
What comments about the Heritage Action Plan is true. When I was studying the history of the borough, I saw patterns of development through about nineteen forty that really seemed to reflect the character of the borough. But on further discussion with the state historic preservation planner, actually, his name is Cory Kegerez, and he's the regional representative that consults with and really helps communities with their preservation objectives. He noted that nineteen forty-five was really a turning point. Nineteen forty was somewhat more arbitrary than nineteen forty-five because development patterns changed very dramatically after the war. And you know, you no longer saw these grid-like development patterns. So we tried to capture, this is, you know, you would say, the character of the borough when it was still being developed with these grid-like patterns, when it still was adopting these patterns of development that were really established many, many years before. So I hope that answers your question, Gigi. Thanks.
Okay.
Speak to the fee structure, please.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. The way the ordinance is written now is that council can determine at a future date what any fees, if any, would apply to people who want to make this application. At the moment, council decided they would not have fees included in this ordinance. And the fines are the same way. There are no fines prescribed in this ordinance that council would, the ordinance provides for council to set those at some particular date. The conversations we've had at, council have not really covered that topic. I don't think it's a topic that they wanted to discuss right now. So that's a question really for them. It's in the ordinance that they can prescribe them, but at this point they are not prescribed. Dennis, and Bill, you're the last people in the room. Do either of you have a question or a comment? Always good to see you, Bill. I haven't seen you in a while. Okay, so we're going to go to, do you have a comment? Yes, you wanted to clarify something.
I wanted to clarify.
And then let's go to the Zoom.
I know you have people on Zoom.
I'm just going to clarify a couple things very briefly, and I know we have comments on Zoom, but we would want you to. There was a couple of questions about visible from the public way and in the first second lot. The ordinance says both for the certificate of appropriateness and the advisory review that in order to be covered under this ordinance, the proposed alteration must be both visible from the public way, the street and the sidewalk, and in what's known in Narbor zoning code as the first or second lot layer. So that wouldn't include a garage that was located behind the building, even if the garage was located, was visible from another, from a side street, it still would be covered there. Just to clarify. So things you're doing on the back of your building or something on the back of your lot is not going to be covered by this ordinance. And just as they were mentioned, just to clarify, the additional removal of solar panels is not covered in any way, neither by the hard or the advisory review, nor does this ordinance cover materials used for color of anything, just since those issues came up. And then I would just say that I've only been working with Narbor since February, so just for a few months, and I've seen already a number of other public meetings where a building is proposed to be torn down and a couple of new, more expensive houses to be put into place. And I've just, I've seen members of the public come and just like beg, is there any way to save this home that we care about, that's part of our community, that has been tear down and put up more expensive homes, larger homes that are going to sell for more money? So this is, this ordinance will, to some extent, try to address that issue, and I realize it's maybe not a perfect tool, but it's, that's part of the aim of this. I might put our seats apart. Okay. We're going to Zoom comments, which I think means that you're passing the microphone that way, or you want to...
The graphic, the comment.
Can I just make one comment? Not everybody in our face...
Excuse me. We went around the room, and everyone had a chance. We need to maintain order. Everyone has a chance to be ready, guys, people on.
Okay, we're switching to hear everyone commenting, so we're going to to make sure everyone there gets to make a comment, and we'll get to. And I'm going to mute here, and we're going to hold this up here.
Yeah. Let's see, all right, here. So the first person I have on the list is Lisa McCann. So Lisa, I'm going to unmute you in just a moment here.
Okay. Couple of questions and I guess comments. I live on the two-hundred block of Hampton. I guess that's the first place to start. I do have a background in architectural history and historic preservation. I guess I should come clean on that. I understand the explanation that the focus is on the removal of features and not necessarily exterior fabric issues, but the use of vinyl siding and the change in window pane configuration and window material in a home have equal or more impact on historic fabric and appearance of historic buildings. If every house in Narbor was recited, except for the stone ones, with vinyl siding and all the windows replaced, this change would be significant, and it would still meet the requirements of this ordinance. So that's a point. When it comes to vinyl siding, you state that the installation of the new siding wouldn't in and of itself be cause for obtaining a certificate of appropriateness. But we all know that most vinyl siding or any siding installations involve the removal of window trim, corner boards, and perhaps the covering of faces and cornices. Would they then require a certificate of appropriateness if this siding project did involve the removal of this trim? Third comment, many homes in Narbor have side entrances, and I don't believe this was answered in the comments just made about public right-of-way, but this is a question about how would these side front doors be assessed as visible from a public right-of-way? I seem to have lost everybody, but anyway. Okay, and then finally, the ordinance does cover materials in Section seven E. If the alteration involves the removal of a feature in subsection D five through D ten above, the alteration shall not require a certificate of appropriateness if the feature is replaced with a feature that is similar to and in character with the contributing resource and meets one of the following criteria: that the feature is replaced in kind with the identical material and detailing, or in instances where the materials and details from the period of historical significance are either unavailable or their use is economically infeasible, the feature may be replaced with new material that matches the existing and composition, design, texture, and other qualities, even if not completely duplicative. So those are my comments.
Does anyone want to respond?
Sure.
Can we continue?
Sure. I couldn't keep track of the questions, though. So one is about removal and replacement. First of all, that passage you cited only applies to the twelve things that are already listed as the changes that would require an application for, that would require a certificate of appropriateness. That provision that you read was added in at the request of council. Council members wondered, if someone was removing something but replacing it, should they have to get a certificate of appropriateness? And so the ordinance was amended at the request of council to say that if you are removing one of those things that you mentioned and replacing it, if you are replacing it in that manner, you would not require a certificate of appropriateness. So really what it's meant to do is kind of carve out more exclusions from the rule. What were the other questions?
I think there's a question about, yeah, Lisa, could you actually give us your questions again in a brief format?
Is she still there?
Put the mic up there.
I remember one of her questions.
What?
Well, it was actually a comment, and she said that she believed that siding your house with vinyl siding or removing your windows and replacing with vinyl diminishes the integrity or...
What's that? Sorry.
Or, you know, compromises the character of the house or the district. I wouldn't disagree as a preservationist. I would wholly agree with her that windows are extremely important character defining features of historic houses. And I would never encourage anyone to remove them. I would encourage anybody who asks me to repair them, you know, if possible. But this was, this was a decision the planning commission recommended to Borough Council based on really the feedback of the public, you know, how much regulation is palatable and what is your overriding goal here in Narbor? Is it to preserve Narbor like a Nantucket or Disneyland, or is it to preserve the form of the neighborhood, the streetscapes, what gives Narbor sort of its intangible qualities? And that's why I believe the decision was made to leave some of these smaller details off of the list of things that are regulated. Thanks.
Well, I think part of the question was, so there's nothing about adding vinyl siding anywhere in the ordinance, but in order to add siding, you sometimes have to remove other elements that may be covered in the ordinance in some way. So would that sort of de facto, I believe that's a question, would that sort of de facto make it apply? And the answer is dependent on whether you're closing them or something similar as you were deciding on, or whether you're just taking them off, and what exactly it is, so... I don't think anything that's regulated by COA, I mean, maybe the cornice treatments, the arid corolla or cornices would need to be removed to install a sign if you're cleaning them back, and you don't need a COA, otherwise you probably do. Otherwise, you probably do. All right, next person on the list here is Carol Marie Scanlon. So I'm gonna unmute. I'm on Zoom list. Yeah, there's like 50 people on Zoom, so.
Before unmuting me, I would like to say that in my many meetings that I've attended about this historic district, it seems that it started out as saving really unique buildings. And it has morphed, in my opinion, to a nanny state. It's devolved into a mother may I. I oppose this broad brush historic district that the residents have to get certificate appropriateness for changes to their homes. I have a 1910 Craftsman House. It is like a cookie cutter house from many houses in Narberth. There is absolutely nothing special about my house. It and many like mine do not need to be in historic districts. I agree with the gentleman who said, people who want their house in the historic district and put it in the historic district, or if their house is especially unique and fabulous to our history, put it in the historic district. But by a broad brush, putting 90% of the town in a historic district is really, really uncalled for. Actually, something that affects this many people in Narberth really needs to be a ballot question. Now, we all know that the historic district is advertised to be voted on on July 21st by council. So tonight, our comments really mean nothing. As, you know, people noted tonight, there's a lot of people who oppose this, but it's going to go through anyway. That's why it really should be a ballot question rather than an ordinance question. But I'm going to continue anyway. I'd like it noted that the first speaker, who was prior to Chloe, said there is so much more to Narberth, and that is so very, very true. Narberth is not just buildings, it's the neighborhood. And one of the most important aspects that attract people to Narberth is our walkable neighborhood and our parks. We neighbors want our parks protected. Historic preservation should include our parks, the rich history of our parks. In past meetings, Todd has said that no open space will be preserved. But in actuality, according to the maps, Narberth Park is in the preservation district. I want to know why Sabine Park is not in the Sabine District or in the preservation district. As noted in the Narberth Historic District Draft Article, Section 127 of the Pennsylvania Constitution says, "The people have a right to clean air, pure water, and the preservation of natural scenic historic and aesthetic values of the environment. Pennsylvania's public natural resources are common property of all the people, including generations yet to come. As trustees of these resources, the Commonwealth shall conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all people. With this criteria, we in Narberth have that right to clean air, pure water, open spaces, and the preservation of our natural scenic and historic aesthetic values of the environment." This means that our parks must be preserved in perpetuity. And as noted in Article 5, Section 2 of the Narberth Historic Code or Designation Criteria, Narberth Borough may designate one or more areas of the borough as a historic district if the area meets the definition of a historic district in at least one of the following criteria. 2A, is it representative of the broad patterns of development, heritage, or culture of the borough of Narberth or our nation or the Commonwealth? 201 Sabine was the site of the original Narberth School. Playground was added to the school around 1920, according to Vicky Donahue's letters. It has been a park serving the families of Narberth ever since the early 1900s for 100 years. 201 has been a school and now is a school. It deserves the same type of preservation that any other building, any other property on the borough has. Section B, 2B, is it associated with an event that is significant to the history of the borough of Narberth, Commonwealth, or nation? The tapped administration from 1909 to 1913 gifted cherry trees to Narberth and are planted at Sabine Park. These trees blossom and provide shade to the park. They're healthy trees, they're huge trees. We all know that trees are very important contributing factors to the landscape of Narberth. And 2C says, is this property associated with persons or groups of people significant to the history or the culture of the borough of Narberth, Commonwealth, or the nation? You could just look by the thousands of people that visit Sabine Park every year. Narberth is not just buildings, Narberth is neighborhoods. Neighborhoods need their parks protection. Historic preservation should include our parks, the rich history of our parks. Residents of Narberth want open space protection on our parks. Narberth needs to preserve our history and put easements for natural land trust or open space protections on the park, giving permanent protection to our parks. This historic district is a perfect opportunity to do that. If the historic district will not do this, if the historic ordinance will not do this, we need to find other ways for have permanent open space protection on our parks. Because once a park is gone, once our open space is gone, it never is returned. And that will greatly diminish the value of our town, of our community, and every single resident who lives here. And that is my... I'm very disappointed that this historic ordinance is not a ballot question, that yes, it's been recommended to council for approval. But really, the people of Narberth need to have their voices heard if they really want this and not just a committee giving a recommendation. I understand that, you know, Chloe and the team have done a lot of work for it. But the people of Narberth need to speak on this, not just a committee, not just a few people. The majority of Narberth needs to speak.
Thank you, Carol Marie. I would like to clarify the status of parks in the historic district. The historic district, the language that was read is a broad set of ideas about things that could be included in a historic district. At the moment, the proposed historic district is limited to those resources that Caplan described. The reason that the Sabine Avenue property is not in the historic district is because the building that is there was developed after 1945. There are no resources there on that property that are dated before 1945. There may have been things there in the past, but they're not there now. And while there might be trees that are older, trees are not regulated by the historic district. And therefore, the map would not include them, a property that has old trees or trees that are significant for other reasons. So that's why the Sabine Avenue property is not in the district. The reason the Narberth Park is in the district is two reasons. The way that a lot is drawn for the Narberth Park, the lot includes the library and the, you know, the associated wings of the library, the Legion and the Girl Scouts rooms. That is a resource that predates 1945. And so therefore, that is part of the district. Also, it is not legal to draw a historic district that has particular properties carved out. You cannot have donut holes in historic districts, according to the state law. So even if there were an area within the broader historic district that for some reason shouldn't be considered historic, it would still have to be included in the district. But what would happen is it would be classified as non-contributing. So within the district, as we said earlier, there are properties that are contributing because they were built 1945 or before, and properties that are non-contributing because they were built after 1945. And so that would be a way that a resource within the district that's older, that's built more recently would not be included. But that's the reason, those are the two reasons why the Narberth Park, that property is in the district. And that's why the Sabine property is not.
I challenge you on that one. Because as you know, schools have to be updated. Unless you have a...
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry. It is late, you've made your comment. We've heard your comment about the school and I answered it. And we're not here to debate that tonight. I think you've made your position clear. We explained why the decision was made. We're not here to reevaluate that decision. If you'd like to take that up with council, please do. I'd like to move on to other commenters.
All right. It looks like our next person is Evan Baum. So Evan, I'm gonna unmute you.
All right, good evening, everyone. I have a question I appreciate clarification on, and I'll make that question and then just have a short comment. I'm assuming since this ordinance was published for review in its entirety, that Borough Council doesn't have the ability to selectively include or exclude certain things upon which it would be voting when it reviews it for consideration on the 21st. The reason I'm asking that question to my comment is specifically about Section 10 in the Advisory Review. I'm largely in agreement with the gentleman who made the prior comments in person at the meeting there in attendance about how that particular section seems to be overly burdensome to property owners. In particular, what I quite frankly find offensive is the requirement that someone would need to go through that process to install or alter a ramp, lift, or other accessibility feature, as pointed out in C, Section, C number 8 in Section 10. If there are already zoning and permitting processes for installing those, when an individual would need to do something like that to their property, to ask them to go through what would be up to two months of additional work and time simply to get to the permitting processes is really just, in my mind, fairly baffling as to why that would be in there simply because their property dates 1945 or before. If that particular piece could be written out of the ordinance, largely I'd be in agreement with the rest of it. But that piece in my mind is really, really quite strange for individuals or families who would need to do that in short order for accessibility reasons. So that's my comment. I would appreciate the clarification about the ability to vote this up or down in its entirety or in parts. Thanks.
All right, Evan, thank you for your comment. All of addressed that one. So once Borough Council has advertised an ordinance, any substantial change to the ordinance would require them to re-advertise it. So if Borough Council were to... For the meeting on the 21st, their options are either to, you know, approve the ordinance as written, to not move forward with the ordinance, or to, if they want to make changes to the ordinance, advertise a, you know, re-advertise it to modify a form of the ordinance, which they end up to take up at that date.
Is there not a fourth option, a friendly amendment, to absolutely allow the grant issue to fall to the ADA compliance at the federal and state level? That particular issue could be struck for this document should council decide a friendly amendment could be acceptable at the time?
Council would need to re-advertise. So if council could make changes, they just have to re-advertise it? All right, then our last person I have on the list, Alexandra.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I feel right now, in response to some of these comments I'm listening to, first of all, I know that there are a lot of people in Narberth who really want a historic ordinance. And they don't want it to be really restrictive. I understand that. And that's why I was part of the committee that developed it, of the residents that developed it. And we specifically wanted something that wasn't restrictive. So right now, first of all, just to correct some of these misconceptions, right now, there is nothing in our zoning code that prevents tear downs. In fact, some of the redistricting or the re... I don't know how to put it. But the things that are now allowed in each district actually incentivize tear downs. And I spoke out about this since before the code was passed. And right now, the code is actually incentivizing these new houses that are actually more expensive than the older homes. They're going for higher prices. So I don't think that having these older homes and preserving them is going to create, you know, more expensive homes. I think right now it provides a great alternative, a more affordable alternative to the houses that are perfectly fixed up. Or, I mean, not perfectly, but the new homes that are actually perfect in every way. And I know a lot of people want them these days, but... So I believe it creates a good alternative and it's more affordable and it keeps it more affordable. I just want to comment, though, on Lisa McCann's comment about, you know, there are... She wanted, there were... First, she thought there was a handful. I think I'm getting this right. There was a handful of homes that were really historically significant. I believe, and this also relates to... No, she was coming, was this? I forget who said this. But one person said vinyls, we're talking about vinyl siding and a question on that. The other, somebody else said something about there are only a handful of homes that were historically significant. And I want to comment on both of those things. I think that, yes, vinyl siding and inappropriate windows do completely change the look of an older house. And it takes, they take off a lot of the features that make it really attractive. And my belief is that if we encourage people to put back what was originally there or something close to it, we would see that there were way more than a handful of really unique historic houses in this borough. I'm willing to bet around 20 to 25, at least, Victorian homes that I've seen on my walks could be amazing looking houses, but they're covered in stucco and vinyl siding and all the details are taken off the outside. And we walk right by them and we don't even see them. Or we think they're eyesores. So now that's down the road. But, okay, so... Yeah, I feel that it's really important. And this wasn't mentioned, but I'm just going to ask you, are you still considering as part of the voluntary sort of review, I think it's a review board, but it's like a voluntary group of people helping people with choices for materials like siding, windows, things like that. Not to tell them what to do, but to help them find affordable solutions that are appropriate to the houses. So that would be something that I came up with, an idea that I thought would be really helpful to people. And I'm hoping that that is still being considered as part of this ordinance, or the whole effort. And I also believe that, you know, once, if we could get people really taking care of their older homes, that we will attract more people who want to do that. And I think this community is really... It could be amazing looking and even more attractive and more pleasant to live in. So anyway, I'm all for it. And I think we can probably solve a lot of the problems that people have with it by just coming up with some changes. So that's it.
Thanks, Alexandra. Alexandra, were you asking about the Advisory Review? Is that what you're asking about?
I'm not sure what I'm asking about. Okay, there was a certain section of this proposal that we made. Okay, there was a certain section of this proposal that we made, which was that there would be a group of resources available to homeowners if they were trying to, you know, you put, use different materials like windows, siding, and all the things that we weren't mentioning. So that was, I was sure, I wanted to know if that was part of the advisory board, or whether that was just a separate resource.
So Alexandra, your question is, are there other, would there be other resources available to homeowners, I believe, like informational resources?
Like online, even, online, or even in person?
So let me respond to that. One of our discussions was whether or not the advisory review should go to the Historic Architecture Review Board, or could it simply be a meeting with a staff person? And it seemed like going to a group of volunteers or board was too onerous for something that was just advisory. And since most of the things that are listed in the 10 things that would require an advisory review would also require building permits, most of not all, it wouldn't be too much different from going in and talking to the building officer. And that seemed to be a lot more reasonable and less onerous on people, since most of these changes, not all, but most, would require a consultation with the zoning officer or the building officer anyway. So what is hoped, Alexandra, is that that consultation, I'm looking at your computer like I'm looking at you. What is hoped is that that consultation, I should look at the camera, would enable that person who is providing the consultation to offer those resources. Here's where you can find information about materials. Oh, if you want to go green, did you know about this source of things that you could choose from? Or whatever, that this would be really like getting free advice, and that person, if that person didn't have the information themselves, could lead the person who comes in for a consultation to other resources. So the hope is that that connection would happen through the advisory review process. So that, I believe, is the answer to the question. We've been around the room once, it is almost 11 o'clock. We've never had a planning permission meeting go this long, and I know you guys have really toughed it out and sat patiently as...
My battery is dead.
As has you all.
It's going on.
I would, I would, there will be more conversation, obviously, at Borough Council about this topic. I would like to move on to the last item on our agenda this evening is public comment, but I will only take public comment on issues that pertain to Plating Commission business that were not discussed tonight because of the lateness of the hour. This is our third meeting this month in four weeks, and so is there any public comment on any other matter before the Plating Commission that wasn't discussed tonight? Is there any other public comment? Okay. I thank you all for coming, I thank you all for staying, and I really appreciate your staying through that first agenda item. I hope if nothing else, it helps you see the kind of thoroughness with which, and thoughtfulness with the approach to these things. I'm sorry if all of you didn't have a chance to comment as much as you wanted, but because of the lateness of the hour, it's just important to kind of go through comments and make sure everyone has a chance to speak. So I appreciate your forbearance with that, too. So thank you all, thank you all for coming. The council meeting is July 21st, our next meeting is the first Monday of August. Who knows what will be on our agenda, we'll wait and see. But thank you, thank you all very, very much, and I will call for motion to adjourn the meeting.
I so want to.
Mr. Cormatt, motions to adjourn the meeting. Do you have a second to adjourn the meeting? Are you going, are you all in favor of adjourning tonight? Thank you, thank you all, thanks to Chloe, thanks to Capley. And last but not least, thanks to our Borough Manager, Samantha Bryan, for on the fly arranging this meeting in this room with her reward, and dealing with a lot of technical surprises we're going to have to spare tonight.